Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for October 20th, 2022. If you'd have everyone take a moment, please silence their cell phones. This meeting is being taped by FCTV. I'd like to introduce the board, starting to the audience's left. My far right is Jared Tamis. He is an alternative member. My name is James Morse. I am the chair. To my left, to your right, is Scott Peterson. He is the vice chair. To his right is Suzanne Murphy, who serves as the clerk. And his right is Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member. We're also joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, currently putting chairs out, and our recording secretary, Ashley DeMello. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town's zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on applications. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public to allow a full and fair discussion of a project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and then read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making personal or derogatory statements. They can include an opinion in favor or in opposition or to ask a specific question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but it is provided so that people listening to FCTV can hear it. The board may continue a hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that it has received enough information, it may make a decision. The hearing will then be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board shall discuss the proposal amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote of three to two is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any zoning board of appeal decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 17. First up this evening, we have public comment. This will be a comment on any item that is not currently on the agenda. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll go with continuations. First up this evening, we have hearing 059-22, One Lookout Avenue, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove a portion of the existing dwelling, remove and rebuild the roof over a portion of the dwelling, adding a half-story, and rebuild the rear of the dwelling, adding a second-story addition.
I have many letters and emails from abutters and interested parties. I have a letter dated September 29, Attorney Kimberly Bealan in opposition, an email dated September 12 from Thomas Farley, opposition, a letter with photos dated September 13 from Catherine Walsh, opposition, a letter dated September 15, Attorney Bealan on behalf of Michael and Paula Zawada, with attachments, a letter dated September 14 from Attorney Bealan, Bealan, a letter dated October 11, 2022, from Courtney Barber and Joanne Stockwell of Sixth Crown, opposition, a letter dated October 19, 2022, from Attorney Edward Kirk on behalf of the Walshes, in opposition, a letter dated October 19 from Ellen Briggs with comments and concerns, and a letter dated 1019 from Attorney Bealan. And then I have letters and referrals from town departments. I have a referral dated July 27, 2022, from the Assessors' Office. No comment. A referral dated July 26, 22, from the Water Department, signed by Catherine O'Brien, the Water Superintendent. The town water services the site with an existing 3/4 inch. The service should be upgraded to a 1-inch per town standards with the addition. This will allow for increased flow and demand from the new construction. I have a date from the Planning Board, August 1, 2022, with no comment. I have a letter from the Engineering Department, August 11, 2022, signed by Scott Schultler, with standard comments. Drywells are proposed as recommended. A limit of work is shown on the plan. How will this be demarcated in the field? And they need to obtain a license from the Select Board for objects in the right of way. I have a letter from the Health Board, signed by Scott McCann, and I have two. I have an updated one now. After looking at the plan and speaking with Tom Bunker, I would revise my original referral to state that the proposed project does not adversely affect the ability to install a future Title V septic. The existing conditions in the proposal will both require variances, and the proposal doesn't appear to make the situation worse. Health doesn't have any issues with this project. I have a letter on August 23 from the Conservation Commission with no comments. Do I need to read Scott McCann's first letter also? And I have a site plan review decision. And I have a letter from the Historical Commission. And that's all I think I have. That's all I have.
Good evening for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Laura Moynihan, a Falmouth attorney, representing the applicant. I'm going to give you a copy of my submission, which I'll read into the record. So with me tonight is Tim Luff, who is the architect for the project, as well as Mr. and Mrs. O'Boy, the applicant. There were two letters from opposing counsel that were filed yesterday, and the applicant unfortunately doesn't have the benefit of submitting written materials to respond to those. So I will be going through our response to those as well, and essentially have included it in my materials, which I'll read into the record. So first and foremost, obviously, there's a lot of neighborhood interest in this project. I'm going to go through the application very quickly, and then I'm going to turn it over to Tim Luff to talk about the elevation plans. So first up, I'm going to put up the proposed site conditions, and probably need to rotate that. So this is an application under Section 240-3 of the FALMA zoning bylaw to change or alter pre-existing non-conforming existing 2-1/2-story structure. It's not an application under 24069E. The lot coverage exceeds 25%, so we're dealing with 240-3 only. Proposal is to remove a portion of the existing dwelling at the rear and shed at the rear of the property, rebuild the existing roof, and renovate the existing top half-story. The existing height is 28 feet 11 inches, which conforms to the zoning bylaw. The top half-story is now habitable space. There will be a height increase by 2 feet 7 inches for the top story. Proposal is to rebuild the rear portion of the dwelling to add a first-floor bedroom for a handicapped family member to use, and a second floor over the existing story. All bedrooms are now on the second floor. Properties non-conforming as to lot coverage by structure and lot coverage overall in excess of 40%. Non-conforming as to the front yard setback, you can see that on the plan, at Lookout Avenue, also at the northerly property line and at the rear property line, which is 6.7 feet. So the proposal will eliminate the rear non-conforming setback and increase it to 22 1/2 feet. Front and north side yard setbacks will be maintained. No increase or extension there. Footprint of the structure will decrease. No increase or extension there. And the height of the structure will conform to the 35-foot requirement of the bylaw. The north side yard will be opened up with the shed removal. So with that, I'd like to ask Tim to come up and spend a couple of minutes to present the elevation plans. I'll get this up for you. And of course, they're not in the right way. There we go. Okay.
Yes. Yes, for the record, my name is Timothy Luff. I represent the O'Boys, and our firm developed these as-built drawings and also the proposed drawings. The letter that is dated October 11, which was sent to you in reference to a discussion about the existing structure, its historicalness, some of the architectural features that are currently at the house today. So I want to recap through that as best I can and try to keep on track in terms of timing. From what we could see, and there really wasn't much documentation, if any, I really wish we could have had photos or drawings or something that could have brought us back to the late 1800s when this original house or cottage was constructed, but we just don't have that. But what we do have is we were able to go into the attic, and by going into the attic, we were able to see that this elevation here, this gable, was the original gable. So when this house was originally built, that was the second 2-1/2-story nature of the house. And then we can clearly see that there was an addition on the front and an addition on the back in terms of getting more second-and slash attic space. So that we know from our existing conditions and being in the attic. We can clearly see that these two pieces were added on. So this was the original gable. What we also note is that on the front elevation, you can see that this porch, it basically telegraphs beneath this wall that was added. So another very easy feature for most people to note that, oh, okay, what was once this porch, which would have looked very, very nice, and keeping with the other porches in the neighborhood, would have wrapped around the front of the structure. And when that addition was added on the front, that took a really important architectural feature out of the way. So that sort of buried and masked what would have been a prominent feature of houses of this time and also those in the neighborhood. Let's see. The other roof line in the back, this, at some point, this L was added, not necessarily anything architecturally attractive, and then we see the shed after that was added. So those are kind of, from what we can tell, the evolution of the design. So the original house, which could have had a lot of character, has been masked by a series of additions, not uncommon with lots of houses of this time period. But just in terms of talking about the historific, the nice features that would have been here over time have been peeled away. When you look at the windows, the windows in the front, these two windows in this front-facing gable, the proportion of those windows are good in terms of their vertical-to-horizontal dimensions. But then, when you look at the side, you can see that clearly somebody changed the proportions of those windows to be very different. Also, none of these windows have a Muntin, so true divided lights. And again, that's a very important, very important piece of the architecture. Whenever we're working in Nantucket or anywhere in the Old Kings Highway, it's always, always important to have true divided lights as opposed to no divided lights or snapping grills. Also, the casement window that you see is here, that absolutely would not have been there in the 1800s. When we look at the freeze board here, you look at the windows, at some point, these windows were pushed vertically, and that is an absolute no-no to break that freeze. So typically, that would have been under the freeze or maybe have a head casing before it hit the freeze. And you can see that everywhere, and we can tell that these were added additions, and it wasn't properly, the heights of those gable windows were not tall enough to accommodate the freeze board. The bow window, again, that's a feature of probably somewhere mid-century. Maybe in the '50s or '60s that was introduced. Absolutely not a feature or any type of fenestration that we would have seen in the late 1800s. So how do we go to the proposal? I only got a minute left. Okay, so in the proposal, I'll just kind of go as quick as I can. What we tried to do is clean up this front elevation, clean up the roof lines. Instead of having three additions or an original building with two additions, we kept the ridgeline going front to back, added some dormers to it. We created a nice rake and return details, freeze details. The windows now are clearly below, a couple shingle courses below those freezes. We've added true divided lights. And basically tried to clean up the structure, to remove the series of additions that were, in my opinion, clearly not done by a design professional, to bring it into something that's more cohesive, that has better architectural details, and is a simpler structure that reads, in my opinion, better than it does today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I asked him to give you that level of detail because you do have in your file a letter from Mr. Haddad of the Historical Commission, but he unfortunately doesn't provide any detail as to why his opinion is or what his opinion is of the historic character of the neighborhood, which I think is significant. I also question that the letter came from the entire commission because they did check their agendas, and it doesn't look like anybody at the commission reviewed this as a whole at a public meeting, which certainly the applicant would have wanted to know about. In any event, moving on, I've given you a lot of material in writing, so I'm going to try and just summarize it. We've given you a lot of photos that show 13 homes that are large, nonhistoric character, many with 2-1/2 stories. There's some suggestion that this neighborhood is all Gothic-style cottages. Well, there are some on the circle, but you can also see if you go into the neighborhood, there's been a transition. There are homes that the board has approved that are not of that architectural style. So I don't think it's fair to characterize it as that type of neighborhood only. We've given you photographs to show homes that abut this property, including the two owned by the abutters, Zawada and Walsh, which are very large homes, not of Gothic-style cottage. The lot coverage analysis that we have given you shows 45 properties and more, with lot coverage in excess of 35%. Many with more than two stories, many with footprints larger than that for this proposed project. The evidence, I think, clearly shows that the project will not be the second-largest structure in the neighborhood, as claimed by counsel for the Zawadas, with no evidence to support the claim, of course. The alleged adverse impacts must be established by credible evidence, not opinion, speculation, or statements of counsel. And I think that's really key in this case. There's a lot of statements. There's a lot of opinion. But it's the job of the board to look at the evidence. What evidence have you been given as to adverse impacts on the neighborhood? That's the standard. I would submit that you haven't been given any, other than various statements, and you'll probably hear some tonight. But you have to have the evidence, and we don't have it. The zoning bylaw standard is a neighborhood standard. It does not protect the individual property owner's views from their own property. We know that. That's pretty clear. No view easements have been provided. Credible evidence hasn't been provided that the neighborhood existing views will be adversely affected. That's the Kenner case, which I've given you. If you go into that neighborhood and drive around or walk around, you see expansive views of the ocean from many, many different locations. The neighborhood enjoys many views of the ocean. Some photographs have been submitted by abutters. I don't think they're accurate representations of the situation, and I've given you that in my written materials. Notwithstanding that the standard to apply is neighborhood views and vistas, as I said, credible evidence hasn't been provided by abutters to show how their views will be adversely affected and what views they will retain. The Walsh photos show the view only from a deck without alteration or impact from the project. The Walsh photos do not show the existing views down Lookout Avenue to the ocean or at the front of the house. And that's key. What other views are available? What other views are there? The Zawada photos include the existing shed that is to be removed and don't represent the actual view from the upper story of the house. The photos that we have submitted show those views. They show what the neighborhood is looking at, and I think, again, they show that this addition is going to have very little impact, if any, on the neighborhood. The burden is on the one claiming that the neighborhood views will be adversely impacted from the project, to show that through credible evidence. Statements of counsel or neighbors' opinion or speculation are not sufficient for the zoning board. Photos of existing views are not sufficient, I would submit, for the zoning board to speculate how this might be the case, and that's the key. The longstanding practice of the zoning board has been to apply the neighborhood views and vistas standards and even ask those in opposition to a project if they have view easements. See the Noonan case, which I've given you, where the board asked Mr. Kirk, who is counsel, he did agree that there was no view easement when attorney, when he was asked by the board of his client, held a view easement. That's been the longstanding practice. Section 240-3 of the zoning bylaw has been discussed, and as far as views and vistas go, I can show you why I think Section 240-3 of the zoning bylaw is not one that protects private views. First of all, Section 24069E isn't applicable to the project. Section 240216 applies to neighborhood visual character, views and vistas of the neighborhood. That's the Kenner case, and Attorney Kirk has acknowledged that, I think, in his letter of October 19. Section 240-3CB applies to any change, alteration, or extension. And the second part of this section applies to an extension of a nonconforming structure. It doesn't authorize a change-
One moment, please, Counselor. That's 15 minutes with the board. How would the board like to proceed? Grant an extension or...
Grant an extension.
How much time would you like to grant?
How much time do they need?
I would say five to eight minutes. And again, it's just information that I haven't, I'm not permitted to submit in writing, so I'd like to do it orally.
A motion to approve another eight minutes.
Thank you.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much. So the submission has been made that this particular section of the bylaw, 240-3CB, authorizes or doesn't authorize you to consider the views and vistas of a private abutter. This is not the standard of review. An extension of a nonconforming structure means where a nonconformity is created or an existing nonconformity is increased. Examples of that are an increased footprint with more nonconforming setback, or an increase in nonconforming lot coverage, or an increase in nonconforming building height. This is how the FALMA zoning bylaw has always been applied. This is why abutters are asked if they hold view easements, because that's a private right. In this case, the footprint of the existing structure will be reduced by the project and nonconforming setbacks maintained or eliminated. Lot coverage will be reduced. There's no increase or extension in this respect from the project. Notwithstanding that, a slight increase vertically in the height of the top story will occur by 2 feet 7 inches, but that's not an extension in that sense of the section of the bylaw. Even in the practical senses, the top half-story already exists and is being renovated. The new addition portion over the existing one-story at the rear of the dwelling is at a lower height than the existing height of the building and is not extending the vertical nature of the structure beyond what already exists. The overall building height conforms to the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw does not contain language to support a claim that an extension means an increase in height within a conforming height limit. To suggest otherwise means to negate decades of zoning board practice regarding applying neighborhood views and vistas standards and requesting view easements from abutters. You're being asked to import language into the zoning bylaw and to misread it in an effort to support one owner's case. To have one section, 240216, looking to neighborhood views and vistas, and another section looking to individual private abutter views and vistas is not logical and is not supported by the language of the zoning bylaw or the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. And I've put this sketch up here to show you that the absence of individual abutter protection of views is further evident from the bylaw, Section 240C24, that permits alteration to a nonconforming structure where the alteration will comply with all applicable sections of the bylaw without increased habitable space. That's a by right without any zoning board review. So as an example, the structure at One Lookout Avenue could be raised and reconstructed within a conforming building envelope, which I've shown you in the purple, located at the rear of the lot at 2-1/2 stories and lot coverage by structure at 20% without any consideration of views and vistas at all. And that's shown on the sketch. So that would be extremely detrimental, I would imagine, to the neighbors and to the abutters. But that's allowed by right, and that's because the zoning bylaw recognizes that individual property rights can't be protected as a whole. You have to look to the neighborhood. The abutters' private views of the ocean are not interests protected by the zoning bylaw. Private view rights are granted by legal instrument of easement and not the FALMA zoning bylaw. This is well-settled in Falmouth and elsewhere, such as in the town of Chatham, which is the Kenner case. So the questions for the board. Are there benefits to the project? Yes, there are benefits. We've given you those in writing. Improvement to an aging exterior, improvement to the historic character, which Tim's discussed. The front porch area will be modified to enhance views. The aging shed at the rear of the property will be removed to improve the site. Neighborhood views will be enhanced by the shed removal. The front step encroachment into Lookout Avenue will be removed. New stormwater management to control runoff. Outdated water service will be replaced. Lot coverage will be reduced. The rear structure nonconforming setback will be eliminated. No increase in bedrooms is proposed. The building height will be conforming to the zoning bylaw, under 35 feet, and the family will be able to house a handicapped member with a main-floor bedroom. So then the question is, are there any neighborhood detriments or neighborhood adverse impacts that have been established by credible evidence? Again, neighborhood, and I submitted no. That hasn't been done. Even if the abutters supplied credible evidence, do the impacts on the abutters alone mean that the zoning board somehow import those as neighborhood impacts? Are we to take those individual private owners and say that's the entire neighborhood? I would say no. That's not authorized under the bylaw. Should the board recognize that the neighborhood is unique with many undersized lots with reduced building setbacks and large dwellings? Yes, I think so, and have in past decisions, such as one at 42 Tower House Road, where a typical cottage was taken down and rebuilt for the dwelling, a large dwelling at 2-1/2 stories, which we've given you pictures of. Can the board find as a result that the project is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure? I would submit yes. And can the zoning board make the findings under the zoning bylaw as a result to approve the special permit? And I would submit that the board can. And again, in listening tonight to the, to the testimony, I would urge you to ask yourself, is this credible evidence? Or is it opinion? Or is it a statement? Where are the details? Where are the neighborhood impact, adverse impact photos? In this particular neighborhood, you're going to have impacts. You're going to have impacts. The question is, are they adverse to the neighborhood or the town? That's really the test for you. And you, you have to answer that question only with evidence. If you don't have credible evidence of that, then the answer has to be no. I'd also like to just very quickly address the issue that's been raised about my client's lack of neighborhood outreach here. I did personally reach out to both counsel for the Zawadas and abutter and counsel for the Walsh abutter and asked them if they had a proposal for some alternative, and I did not receive a response from either one. Counsel for the Zawadas indicated in September that she would review it with her clients and get back to me, and she did not. When the first survey stake was put in the ground on my client's property, the, one of the abutters began the campaign of opposition here. My clients felt it wasn't appropriate to go out and pit neighbors against one another. They did talk about the project with both the abutters, and they did what they could, but given the level of pursuit of additional opposition that has gone on, that was the extent of it until counsel got involved. But as I said, we have not received any details of some alternative. In my practice, when somebody comes to me with a project like this, who's an abutter, the first thing I ask them is, do you have a view easement? And the answer is usually no. And the reason I ask that is because I tell them the longstanding practice of the zoning board is to ask for view easements, because the zoning bylaw protects the neighborhood interests, not individual property owners. And my suggestion always is try and work with people and give them some alternative that maybe, that you can live with. But here, we have not received that. I just want the board to be aware of that, so. Like to reserve the opportunity to rebut any further testimony. And also, Mr. Chairman, if appropriate, I'd like to submit a letter from the proposed contractor who's certifying that all work can be done within the boundary, which is a question.
Questions for the applicant. Start with you, Jerry.
Mr. Kirk, Attorney Kirk's letter quite strikingly says that the Kenner case does not support the applicant's premature arguments regarding agreement based on impaired views and vistas. Then he lists four or five bullets without detail. Do you agree with, why don't you agree with that? Or do you?
Well, the Kenner case is obviously a court case, so it's talking about what happens when you get to, to court. But the issue of standing, as you know, is one that comes up at this board, where an abutter typically is presumed to be an aggrieved person until the applicant or the project proponent, whether at the board level or at the court level, produces credible evidence to suggest that the claims of the abutter are essentially not supported. So the Kenner case revues that law, which I think is pretty well-known. The difference, I think, in my submission and Mr. Kirk's submission is Mr. Kirk is assuming or stating that there is some credible evidence, and I'm submitting there isn't. I think when you supply a photograph with somebody sitting on a deck showing the ocean, that's not illustrating the impact from the project. That's just showing what's, what's existing. So, in my submission, if standing is an issue, then with the materials that we have provided, we have, I think, clearly rebutted that there's any aggrievement here because the evidence doesn't show that aggrievement. It, it, it is a burden. You can't just come to the zoning board and say, we don't like this, we're impacted. You have to show why. You have to have some evidence of that. So that's essentially what the Kenner case talks about. And in that case, the abutters who filed suit and challenged the zoning board's permit did not have credible evidence of how this change was going to adversely affect the neighborhood. And it was clear in that case that they did not have a private right to a view easement. So their case was dismissed.
Thank you. Scott?
Do you know if any three D renditions were done by the architect or to look at any shadowing effects that might take place with the alterations to the?
We did not do any shadowing effects because we, that is a requirement under section two forty sixty nine E of the bylaw, but it is not a requirement under section two forty dash three. So our application is not under section two forty sixty nine E. So we did not do any shadowing analysis because we didn't-
Yeah, but I, I understand that aspect of it, but understanding too that we have us, the issue tonight is you, you had information from abutters that, that they had concerns about some of that. And to your point, it would have been nice if you had had your own information that could show us that there isn't any adverse effect to the abutters.
Well, again, I think you're kind of twisting it around because a statement that there's going to be shadowing is not evidence. It's a statement. And so, if evidence was put forward by someone that there was shadowing, by that I mean architectural evidence or engineering evidence or anything that we could take as valid, then it would be our job to rebut that. But since nothing was provided, this applicant, in my submission, should not have to go to the cost and expense of doing something like that when there's nothing to, to counter and it's not required by the zoning bylaw. So that's not to say that we're trying to be difficult. It's just that these applications are extremely costly, and you can see the work that has gone into this to date just dealing with all of these, what I would submit are exaggerated and unsupported claims, without any evidence to back it up. So if there's some evidence to back up a claim of shadowing, then it would be our job to rebut that, but that hasn't occurred. I guess what I'm saying is I don't think the burden is on us to prove that.
I understand. Thank you.
When did the applicant first reach out to neighbors?
Well, when the first survey stake was put in the ground, even before the architect got involved, my client was approached by Mr. Zawada, one of the abutters. And he had left a note, she says, in her, to speak with him. And at that interaction or that verbal communication was a discussion of what they intended to do. That did not go very well for Mr. Zawada. And from that point forward, my client has indicated to me that he pursued other neighbors to attempt to stop or oppose the project. Mrs. Walsh was consulted in or around the same time, and they had conversations at that time. My client had felt at that time that Mrs. Walsh was accepting the situation for the project as proposed and to the effect that she had enjoyed her view for many, many years, but in, in essence acknowledged that she didn't have a legal right to it. That was the extent of that reach out. And as I said, from that point on, it was obvious to my clients that there was a campaign going on in the neighborhood to garner further opposition, and they didn't feel like they wanted to counter that by going to neighbors to try and garner support. It would be a pitting neighbors against neighbors in a, in a very lovely neighborhood, so.
And then the other question I had is, you kind of said that the photographs that we received from abutters were altered or fake or not accurately representing. And do you have pitches for us that accurately represent?
Yes, I filed those for, with my written materials. So, they're in your file. The, the issue, it was in my letter of October seventh, and it's in the file, and there's a lengthy submission there with all those photographs attached. So my point on the photographs that were submitted, the one, one being that the shed wasn't removed from the photograph. So, there was a photograph submitted showing a second story put over the first story, but the shed was still in the photograph. And I've given you information that shows how that removal of that shed opens up that view corridor so that even though there's a second story going on in one location when you're on the street or you're at, even at the Zawada property, the removal of that shed is going to enhance that view significantly. So that photograph is in your file. The other issue I had with the photographs was that I, that we felt that the photograph showing the second floor, floor addition was distorted in that the top peak was at the same or equal level as the peak of the main house. And it's clearly lower, as shown on the certified plans. So that was an inaccurate representation of the height of that proposed second story. The last issue we had with the photographs that were submitted, again, in your file, was that they did not show the views that will be maintained or, or retained from both the abutter properties, particularly at lookout, front area of Lookout Avenue, the front portion of the house at the Walsh property, the front yard, the Zawada property, through, through the shed removal. Those images were not provided. And again, what also was not shown to you, which we showed through the photographs, was that when you're up at the neighborhood, up at Crown Circle, you're not going to see this addition, if at all. You might see it when you're on Forest or Ave walking along. You might see a portion of the second story, but that's about all you're gonna see. So the statements that have been made by opposing counsel that it's undeniably visible, that it's indisputable that it will be seen, that's what I have objected to. There's, there's no evidence to show that, and they're just opinions, which anybody going up there and walking around or driving around can see are false. The last issue with the photographs is that they don't show the magnificent views that anybody in the neighborhood can get just walking around from many different locations. And that's a factor that the zoning board has in the past and should here, I would submit, take into account because we're talking about the views that are protected for the neighborhood, not views that are protected by private abutters. Thank you.
Dr. Sussa? Mark?
One of the, there are a couple of the foundational parts of this code states for a special permit, that there can be no new non-conformities and no increase in the non-conformities. Would you agree with that?
That's what the section says, correct.
Okay.
Well, it, it doesn't say no. In, there can't be an increase. It's saying an extension would be considered an increase in a non-conformity.
It's a matter of semantics.
Right.
With this north or rear wall, you intend to increase the height. Is that not correct?
That's correct, on, over the first floor.
How can an increase in the height not be an increase in the non-conformity?
Because the height is not, the height is conforming. So, the increase in the non-conformity-
The whole wall is non-conforming.
To the set, to the setback, okay? But our bylaw does not specifically say that if you increase the elevation, as long as you're staying within the conforming height level, which is thirty-five feet, which is what I've given you, you're not increasing the non-conforming nature of the structure. So the increase in the non-conformity would be if the setback went from two feet to one and a half feet. If the lot coverage went from forty percent to forty-five percent. If the, uh, uh, front yard setback was, you know, twenty-five feet and went, or twenty feet and went to eighteen feet. Now, you don't see those kinds of cases because those of us who work with the zoning board know that the board, in that case, type of case, would consider that an extension of the non-conformity and would likely consider it to be a detriment. But you do see many, many cases where you have structures that are not conforming to setbacks that increase the height elevation. And you approve those. You don't say, oh, you're increasing the non-conforming nature of the property, therefore this section applies, which is Mr. Kirk's argument. You don't do that, and you never have. And if you did, then every time you had an application where the height went up, as long as it was under thirty-five feet, you would have to make that finding. You'd have to make that argument, that you made that, that decision. But you don't do that because you consider that as long as the height's under thirty-five feet, it's a conforming height increase. And as long as the setbacks aren't increased or the lot coverage isn't increased, you're not increasing the non-conforming nature of the property. And again, in, in some zoning bylaws, you might see language that specifically says in brackets or otherwise, an increase in the non-conforming nature bracket also means an increase in height. That's a specific statement that we don't have in our zoning bylaw. And to suggest that that somehow now, after forty years of applying that section is supposed to be imported here, that's not logical to me. And that doesn't make any sense. And it's not the way the board, the board has practiced or, or applies that section. So, Mr. Kirk wants you to add that language in. And you can't add that language in. That's town meeting's supposed to add that language in. But, but you don't apply it that way.
I'm given a set of bylaws. My job is to determine what I think that they read. And, um, quite simply, an increase in the height of a non-conforming wall is an increase. To argue that an increase isn't an increase makes no sense. You have a property here with the limits of twenty-five percent lot coverage. We're at forty, which is sixty percent above what would be allowed anyone else. And that's, that's, that's aside from this. But, um, no increase to me means no increase, whether it be horizontally or vertically. And that's how I interpret this. Simply, that's how I interpret it.
So how do you explain then?
You said-
How do you explain the hundreds of cases that have been approved?
Oh, there's, there's no, uh-
So you're saying that, that all the cases that have been approved under this zoning bylaw where setbacks aren't met, but the height goes up are somehow, shouldn't have been approved, that improper findings were made? I mean, that's what I'm saying is that, you know, for decades, that's the way this bylaw has been applied. We don't have, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, but you're saying that there, that there is precedent set, and, and there aren't precedents set by this board. Each case is determined individually by the bylaws. And the bylaws say no increase in the non-conformities and no new non-conformities. And let's get beyond that. As far as the shadowing is concerned, you did know shadowing studies, but anybody who knows the neighborhood, and I live there, knows that the, this building basically is facing due south. The sun tracks east to west over the ocean. So it's absolutely impossible that this addition is not gonna cause shadowing on the Walsh's property. It's just ludicrous to believe that it won't. I mean, the, the thing's what, four feet from the property line? And six feet from their home? It's gonna turn their home dark? There's absolutely no doubt about it. And as far as air circulation is concerned, the same thing applies. The wind blows from the southwest, right through the old boy's property into the Walsh's property. And I can cite the example of my own house in Falmouth Heights. I didn't turn my air conditioning on all summer long, but the house behind me had theirs going constantly because I blocked their airflow. I mean, I'm pre-existing, actually conforming. So, I mean, consideration has to be given to the Walshes for the shadow- So, I mean, consideration has to be given to the Walshes for the shadowing and the air circulation.
But, excuse me, Mr. Finer, where is that a standard that's supposed to be applied here? You, you said that you were reading the zoning bylaw, so where is that standard supposed to be applied in this application?
Shadowing is a, um, is a consideration.
Not under this particular section. It's not. It is under Section 24069E. So if we wanna get, wanna get picky about what the bylaw says...
Weren't we just talking about shadowing studies, and you thought they weren't, um, it wasn't worth the expense? Is it either not worth the expense, or does it not apply?
No.
That doesn't seem to...
I said, I said that it does not apply because the particular section of the bylaw that we're applying under does not require it. In answer to Mr. Peterson, he said, why haven't you done those? And I said, we are not required to do them. If an abutter or someone else provided expert evidence of that, we would rebut it, but that has not been provided.
Counsel, can't you make a reasonable inference here? You're increasing the bulk of the structure considerably. You're going up two point seven feet, and there's a very, very close lot line. Can't a reasonable person such as this board infer that you're going to be, there's gonna be an increase in shadowing and that a request to rebut it is reasonable? This is a discretionary grant, is it not?
But we've never had that request, sir. You know, this is the first time we've had any request for anything. So if the board is making that request, then that's fine. But we have not had that request. We have, if, if one of the abutters or their counsel had said, hey, can you do a shadowing study? We think that would be helpful here to ta, and take a look at how this is gonna impact people, then we would've looked at that. But that hasn't happened. So I don't think that we can be penalized or somehow criticized for that when it's not our burden under the bylaw. If a request is made either by the board or by someone else to do it, that, but that has not happened. All that's happened here is no project, no project, no project. And, you know, Mr. Finer, and if you wanna get into the nuts and bolts of the bylaw, then you have to look at the section that we're applying under. That's not required. You also have to look at the language that you're suggesting about a non-conformity.
I have read through it several times. And you said earlier that, um, it's, um, opinion shouldn't be accepted, or something similar to that. I mean, it's not my, it's how I read the bylaw. No increase is no increase, whether it be horizontal or vertical.
So where's, where's the non-conformity? Where's the non, where's the non-conformity that's increasing? It doesn't say no increase.
I'm gonna ask at this point, do you have a specific question, Mark, about the project? We can get into discussion or application of the zoning law during, during discussion. Because I would suggest that I think what some of you're saying is, is it more detrimental or not, rather than arguing about the application of the zoning bylaw?
And there is case law on, on this point.
Counsel, thank you. We're not gonna have a discussion with the law. I'm just gonna ask, do you have any specific questions about the project?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
I, my, my, the way I interpret it, you're increasing a non-conformity. The height obviously increases the non-conformity. And, uh, and as far as the views and vistas, um, you, you mentioned Crown Circle and Lookout Avenue, but, um, on Bellevue Avenue, will this increase in height not, um, affect the vista of the ocean from there? Somewhere in the, um, neighborhood of the Zawada's, uh, property line in Cotter, Costenbauer, or whatever that name is?
If you look at the photograph that I submitted to the file that we, we supplied in rebuttal, again, evidence was supplied of photographic evidence that we felt wasn't credible, and we submitted a photo in rebuttal showing the shed being removed, the view corridor for that property and for Bellevue Avenue is open right up, all the way down to the ocean. So depending on where you're standing on the Zawada property, yes, you may see the addition. If you're on Bellevue Avenue, we've given you photographs, and if you go up and walk along Bellevue Avenue, you're going to see very little, if any, of that. You might see a corner of it, and what we've said to you is that minimal impact is offset by the fact that that entire view corridor is opened up by the shed coming down. If you're down on Grand Avenue, looking up between the two houses, I've given you the view corridor as well, and you look up the hill, you'll also see how that, if that shed comes down, that whole view corridor is opened right up. But again, when we get into Falmouth Heights and private rights, either one of those two houses on Grand Avenue that abut that view corridor could come to you and ask you to put an addition on their home that would block that view corridor, are you gonna say no to them too? Are you gonna say, oh, well, we've got private abutters here who have rights to that view corridor? That's not what our zoning bylaw protects. Doesn't, doesn't protect people from, you, you live in Falmouth Heights, you know how any change in Falmouth Heights is gonna impact somebody. The question is, is it an adverse impact to the neighborhood or the town? Not the Zawadas and not the Walshes, the neighborhood or in the town. That's your obligation under the zoning bylaw.
That's what I was quoting from Bellevue Avenue.
Right.
That second story addition is gonna block out some of the view of the ocean.
If you look at the photograph that we've given you, you'll see how, it, it's not just what the addition will do, but what the other aspect of the project will do in terms of opening up the view corridor, which, which offsets it. It's not gonna block a view from Bellevue Avenue. You will see maybe from one corner, a corner of the addition. But that's gonna be completely offset by the whole view corridor being opened up. Right now, there's a one-story shed that's blocking it. So I urge you to look at the materials that I, I spent a lot of time trying to give you all of that information, and I hope everybody's reviewed it because it's very important. And it gives you those photographs.
The photographs are taken from one particular point. If you are on Bellevue Avenue and you're looking out over, you even said it yourself, the second story is gonna block a portion of the view. You think it's offset by the shed removal?
I, I didn't say it's gonna block a portion of the view. I said, you're going to see it. But if you look at where the view corridor is, and I've given you that information, and I can show, it's on the GIS map, you see where the view corridor is. That view corridor is completely opened up. Right. So the second story addition, if you're, you're, you might see a small corner of it, but it's not blocking the entire view of the ocean. Now you have it offset by this whole new view. And again, we said the view will be enhanced. That was intentionally done as part of this project to take out that shed and open up that corridor. Again, you, you know, these are private rights that, that we're talking about here.
I'm talking about the public view from Bellevue Avenue.
Well, let's pull the photograph.
I'm gonna, at this point, there are, excuse me, thank you. Start with the board. I think we have a lot of people here, I think, wanna weigh in on this, uh, public comment. I'm gonna suggest that the board suspend its questions. We turn it over to public comment, and we can return to board questions of this applicant.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Turn it over to public comment on this project at this point. Good evening. The applicant, of course, will have reserved the right to address comments of the public as well.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Megan Hall, and I represent Mr. and Mrs. Zawada, who are located at fourteen Crown Avenue. Initially, I wanna begin by just dispelling some concerns or statements that have been made regarding the old boys' outreach to the neighborhood. And I think this is a paramount issue that we have here. And the Zawadas could certainly speak to it themselves, but I will represent to all of you that there has been no outreach to the neighborhood, and that is of high concern. This project is very large. The size is, I won't say enormous, but it is increasing the bulk, and the setback is also being increased in its non-conformity. And there have been no communications whatsoever with members of this neighborhood. There have been no communications with the abutters, including our clients, the Zawadas. And even more to that point, even after receipt of numerous oppositions, after following their initial filing, there was no further outreach. There was pictures that were taken from individuals' properties. There were drones that were flown around the neighborhood to take pictures of different views and aspects. On one occasion, the Zawadas found this drone in their second story window, which is their sole view, is from the second story window of the ocean. To get into really the merits and the basis of our argument and opposition to the project is that, and even though the petitioners have said that, or tried to argue that the burden really is not on them, and it's for all of the people in opposition to put forth evidence, the burden is on the applicant to establish how they are entitled to the relief under the code. And our position is that they have not established relief. There is no entitlement to relief for a special permit, and that is because this project is creating a substantial detriment. And the code says that to determine whether or not there is a detriment, we have to look at whether it creates or extends a new dimensional non-conformity. It impairs views or vistas to the neighborhood, and it does not reasonably conform to the average dimensions found in the neighborhood. Here we have all three situations. This project increases the non-conformity. We have a side yard setback of less than two feet that is now going up in height. We're increasing the height. It's essentially creating a wall that is increasing this non-conformity. The removal of the shed, it's a one-story shed, is de minimis. It is merely taking down a single-story structure that really has no impact on any view. It simply is adding just a little bit, but not much, to the non-conformity situation that we have here. The impact to the view is not just of individual nature. We can acknowledge that there is no private easement, but there is an impact to the view on the neighborhood, and that is, for the whole community of Crown Circle, this view will be impacted. And we have submitted 3D renderings that we had done, though we're not obligated to. We did those so that we would be able to demonstrate to the board the impact of this construction. We engaged this 3D graphic designer in order to be able to show this, and they took the old boys' plans, though they are based on their original plans, which I will know for the board, have now decreased in height by eleven inches, and walls come in by about a foot on the rear. In any event, our 3D renderings, which I will show the board, just give me a moment. Impact not only Mr. and Mrs. Zawada's view. This is their current view from their second story window. This is a photo taken by Mr. Zawada. The proposed construction will result in this view. Additionally, this is the view taken from the top of Crown Circle. That's existing right now. You can see, this is a shed here. The shed has no impact on the view. It is a one-story structure. You can clearly see the ocean over it. It sits at the top of the hill. Everyone can see down a hill and see the water. The proposed construction is going to be over here. This is a 3D rendering of what the proposed construction would look like, though I will admit that the height is now too high based on the revised plans. However, this is going to have an impact for the neighborhood of the view. This is taken from the street, looking down. This is an impact that is of concern to this neighborhood. And as the board has indicated, this is also increasing in bulk. This is, we have a proposed structure that is adding more bedrooms. We are increasing in size. We have a proposed office space that is also, has a, a full bathroom attached to it, which we would submit, is increasing the bulk. We have an issue with this not being in compliance with the character of this neighborhood as well. The Historical Commission has also submitted its opposition to the project. We will also submit to the board that this is a neighborhood comprised of cottages, though not all tiny in scale, but this is a cottage community. And while the architectural, you know, beautification of their property might be enhanced, it however is not in compliance with what the neighborhood character actually is. And for those reasons, we would ask that the board deny the application, and I thank you for your time, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Questions from the board?
I have one question.
Absolutely.
You've said that you believe the height of the wall essentially is a violation of a zoning, even though the setback doesn't change. Do you have any precedent of cases the board issued to support that on other towns where it might be similar?
I do not have that in front of me tonight, but it's certainly something that I could submit to the board if that would be of help or assistance in this. But we would certainly say that this increase in height is increasing that setback non-conformity here.
Okay, thank you.
No question.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you very much.
Other public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Edward Kirk. I'm an attorney with an office in Osterville, and I'm here representing Catherine Walsh, who's seated right here with certain members of her family. Just a couple of quick points on some of the remarks that Laura Moynihan made. The, uh, it doesn't take a lot of imagination to see the photographs that I submitted of the view from the Walsh property and to look at the elevations, the left elevation, so-called, of the old boy project, to see, when you compare those heights, that, that view is going to be absolutely obliterated. If, if you haven't already taken a view, as that term is used, of the site, I wish that you would, you'd be invited to come to the Walsh property and to stand on that deck and see if those photographs are an accurate, accurate representation of what the view is now. And as I say, it doesn't take a great deal of imagination to see what impact that's going to have. I could have, I suppose, penciled in on the photographs, the, uh, the structure, if that would've helped. But I, I think, with all due respect to Laura, things are getting turned around a little backwards. They have the burden of proof to establish that they're entitled to this permit. They have to establish there's no detriment. They have to establish all the criteria of 240 to 16. And I think we're gonna, it's my view, that they haven't met that, that burden. There's a little bit of an attitude of dismissal to the Walshes and the Zawadas. They are the neighborhood in terms of this, this particular project. The neighborhood is not some amorphous entity whose interest, the zoning bylaw is designed to protect, is designed to protect the property owners, the people who live in the neighborhood and, and their, their property rights and their use and enjoyment of those properties. There hasn't been any outreach from the old boys to my client. I got into this situation late. I did send a little note to Laura saying, is there anything that can be done? She said, do you have any proposals? And my response, hopefully not to flip, was tear down this wall, Mr. Kovac. And that's really what, what our problem is here. Views and vistas are basically, have been essential to the character of Falmouth Heights and this particular neighborhood since the very beginning. Went through the Book of Falmouth and just picked out a couple of quotes. Being the highest point of land along Vineyard Sound with its picturesque bluffs and spectacular ocean vistas. And then talk about Mr. Boyd, one of the original developers. Boyd created his streetscapes to conform to the topography of the land. The hill section of Falmouth Heights, Falmouth Heights has streets that run in circles and angles to complement the terrain and the view. So this idea of views and vistas is really baked into how this plan was developed, the plan for Falmouth Heights going back to 1880. Some people wanna have... Some people want to have houses that are near golf courses, have access to golf courses. They want big yards and they want wide streets. People who live in this neighborhood, that's not a primary concern. People in this neighborhood give up big yards. They give up wide, level streets. They give up level lots and open space. There's very little, quote, "open space." And they do that because they want to enjoy the spectacular views of Vineyard Sound, the fresh ocean air and the breezes, and the unbroken sunlight from the crack of dawn to sunset. These are the essential ingredients of the life on Crown Circle. My clients, Catherine and Joe Walsh, have lived here for 50 years. And they raised a family here during the summer months. In 1993, a neighbor owned the property in front of them that the O'Boys now own, had a little project connecting the kitchen to the rest of the house, and he assured the Walshes he was not going to go up and he was not going to interfere with their view, and he kept his word. And that's the low-level one-story now that extends out from the larger portion of the house. And that's the, that's the part of the structure that they want to go up to 35 feet. And the Walshes retired here 20 years ago, and Crown Ave. has been their year-round home. They are able to enjoy their small deck off the kitchen for three seasons. They enjoy the warm sunlight coming through the south side all year round. The new owner, Mr. O'Boy, has paid $1.5 million for one lookout, and he obviously wants to get the most for his money. The current structure sits on a lot of less than 5,000 square feet. It violates the sidelines between the properties. The house is 1.5 feet. The O'Boy structure is 1.5 feet from the property line. There's a total distance of 10 feet between the buildings. Wants to extend that violation vertically by going up perhaps another story and a half right in front of the Walshes' deck and their kitchen, effectively cutting off their connection to Vineyard Sound. Elevations in the plans indicate that the purpose is to accommodate a large bedroom with his-and-her closets, a soaking tub, and a sitting area. Based on my look at the plans, it looks like it's all under a gabled roof, which suggests that there's a cathedral ceiling. The O'Boys will have quite a nice view from their bedroom, but the Walshes', their deck, their kitchen, and living areas will be cut off from the essential elements which make 16 Crown Ave. the unique place to live. Construction, if we proceed and going ahead, it occurred to me in those movies where the prisoner is in his cell looking out the window, watching his own scaffold being built. This would be the experience the Walshes will have if this project proceeds. With respect to the bylaw, I think the standards, as I've said before, my friend Laura, I think she's trying to reverse, reverse the curse here. She wants us to show something we're not, we don't have to show. It's their burden. We're here objecting. Question. In view of the characteristics, the overall characteristics of this site and the essential elements of the neighborhood, what, if any, are the beneficial effects on the neighborhood or the town from this particular aspect of the project? Well, not against the project in total, not against the house being renovated and improved, but our particular aspect of the problem with it is the raising the structure right in front of their deck. What, if any, are the beneficial effects on the neighborhood or the town from that? I suggest there aren't any beneficial effects. And that the adverse effects to the neighbor, the neighborhood, a member of the neighborhood greatly outweigh any such planned effects. Is a 4,900-square-foot lot where the existing structure is only 1 and 1/2 feet from the sideline and only 10 feet from the neighbor's house inadequate and suitable for a new structure, which is more than a story higher than the existing structure? This proposed structure, it cannot be said. I don't think you can find that this proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighbors than the existing structure. Just want to finish up with one more quote from the Book of Falmouth. How great it would be to see the heights become, once again, a place, a part of the town for all to look on with pride. A place for its residents and summer visitors to live together in peace, in harmony, and to enjoy its million-dollar view as they did during the halcyon days of the past. We're asking the board to make sure that everybody's rights are protected and ask you to deny the project as it's been presented. Not forever and a day, but this project is not good. It's detrimental. Thank you.
Other public comment?
My name is Ed Haddad. I'm the chairman of the Historical Commission. I sent you a letter. I just wanted to see if you had any questions about the letter, because I know it's been some questions. And then I just want to make a couple of comments about the neighborhood. I'm not here to talk about the views. In my letter, I think I explained to you that the Historical Commission has been working with the neighborhood for several months now to try to get it designated as a historic district. Why is that? Because we recognize the special nature of this neighborhood. It has survived for almost, since the late 1800s. And almost unique, almost 80% of the houses are original to the, as the dates of the houses were built. It's a very special neighborhood. We've recognized that, and we are trying to work with the neighbors currently to help them to protect the neighborhood. When this project was brought to us, if, if, if this was a historic district, this would not be approved in a historic district. Because we consider the nature of the neighborhood. We consider the neighbors. We consider the effect on, the character of the neighborhood, and that's very important to us. And I hope the board considers those things alone. It's not just a view thing here. I think it's a lot more to the town of Falmouth, that we're losing something very special here. If we lose this neighborhood and it starts to change from what's been preserved by the love of the neighbors who live there. They have preserved it because they love it, and you have to respect that. And that's what you have to consider here in this case. This is not just a story of vistas and views. It's something that Falmouth owns and should be very protective of. Thank you.
Mr. Dak, I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
It was alleged, or I misheard, that the letter came from you as your opinion versus the letter approved by the Historical Commission. Is that relatively accurate?
No, we've been discussing the Crown, the Crown Circle District for many months now. I mean, the letter comes from, came through the town hall, through the planning department. We have discussed this within the board. And this is not my own personal opinion. Like I said, we've had several public meetings about the Crown Circle District, about the importance of the character of that district with the public meetings. So this is not something that I just dreamed up off the top of my head.
No, I didn't mean that. But this particular property, I understand the district.
We've talked about it in our meetings. You know, again, it's part of our Crown, our whole Crown Royal discussion. It obviously didn't start from the beginning because this is something that just came before us recently. But it certainly had become, because it certainly affects what we're trying to do as well. So it was important to the whole board.
I have a question for Mr. Kirk. Mr. Kirk, under the standards of 240, 216, six degrees, in cases where the applicant seeks to increase the height of any structure that encroaches on a required setback, where any increase in height will occur within such an encroachment, there shall be no alteration as of right under this section. How do you interpret that relative to the O'Boys' request?
I have some of the 216 here, but I
You want mine?
I don't, I don't have. I don't think that they're seeking, what they're doing is they're seeking to extend, alter, or change a nonconforming structure. And they're asking for a permit to do that under, basically under two separate sections. 240C3, where the standard is substantially more detrimental in their criteria to reach that. And then the generalized special permit criteria. So it's not, I don't think they're saying that they are entitled to this as a matter of right.
Okay, so that kind of jives with what I believe, does it not?
Okay. Well, I'm not exactly sure what you believe, but I'm
I believe that increasing, increasing the nonconformity in height is an increase. And it says here that alteration, there shall be no alteration as a right under this section.
We're looking at a continuance on this hearing. There are six other hearings tonight. We're coming up on 90 minutes at this. There are people patiently waiting. I'd like to get through if there's any additional public comment on this project.
I think my client would just like to have a quick word.
Certainly.
I do not like to public speak, but I am Catherine Walsh, and my husband is Joe. And Joe is not here because Joe is not doing well. We are both in our late 80s. And this is not a project that I wanted to take on, believe me. But if you go out on our deck and see a wall, I don't know what I would do. But anyway, we have been here for over 50 years. We've been here 52 years next month. And we have five children who spent summers here and loved it. And one of them now lives here. And we have, and their spouse, they all have spouses, grandchildren. We have 14 of those, and we have six great-grandchildren. I consider myself very, very fortunate. The changes proposed by the O'Boys, owners of Lookout Ave., are not consistent with the zoning regulations, and they will negatively affect our property and experience of living in our house. For me and my husband and children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, we object to the planned changes at one Lookout Ave. I have heard abuse of the elderly, but now I feel, though, I am experiencing it. Mr. O'Boy told me that he paid $1.5 million for his house. And that does not, but I do not feel that that gives him the right to destroy my way of living. I ask the board to deny the proposed changes. Thank you very much.
Other public comment?
I'm Courtney Barber. My wife is Joanne Stockwell. We live at 6th Crown Avenue. We purchased the property in 1994 and moved into it full-time in 1996. So we've been around for a long time. I'd just like to reiterate the neighborhood quality that draws certain people to that neighborhood and people who want to preserve it. We do not have a million-dollar view because we're on the north side of the circle, but we have a number of peekaboo views, the best one being looking straight down lookout. And in the wintertime, of course, the view gets better. We will be losing a little bit of view when the O'Boys increase the height of their house. There's not much there, but we can see the ocean from the second story. We've also lost probably three views in other parts of our house over the years because of various kinds of construction. I realize, I think I realize that you have the ability to either address the, address the view and the shadow problems. And I hope that you deny the proposed construction because it's not, it's going to affect the butters, but it's also going to affect us and other neighbors. And it also affects the overall quality of the neighborhood. And in my letter to you guys, I ended, I ended the letter by saying, "We feel that it's important to pursue the essence of the remaining historical significant neighborhoods in Falmouth, of which Crown Circle is one." I think that's important for the town to preserve these unique neighborhoods because we could end up, over a long period of time, looking like hundreds of other places in the United States instead of being a unique place. Thank you.
Other public comment? So, we're going for about 90 minutes on this. I suggest that this is going to be a continuation. I agree. I will assume that there's other questions for the board. I believe, and I'm sure that counsel is going to want to rebut some of the statements made, but we have six other hearings tonight. What do we have on the hearing list for availability for continuations?
Probably November 3rd. If I could have five minutes.
Certainly, counsel.
And again, you know, when letters get filed the day before a hearing, we don't have any opportunity to do anything in writing, so we end up spending a lot of oral time. So Attorney Hall, you know, I don't need to argue this point. I have copies of an email to her and her co-counsel asking if they have any suggestions for changes. I mean, I'm not, I don't appreciate the representation that there hasn't been any outreach. If you want a copy of that from mid-September, I'll give it to you. The response was, I'll confer with my clients and get back to you with an alternative they would find acceptable. But I'll reach out to them and be in further touch. So I've also got a copy of the one to Mr. Kirk. Mr. Kirk did not give me any details of what his client wanted, as he said tonight. So just want to get that on the record. The photos, you know, this is what we're talking about with these photos. So this photo here shows the shed. It's taken at a higher elevation. This photo, the top peak of the photo, is at the same height as the existing building. It doesn't show the shed removed. This photo here does not show the shed removed either. So, you know, this is what I'm talking about, these being distorted. If you look at this photo, it's as high as the cupola. That's just completely inaccurate. And it's not showing this coming out to open up that view corridor. If you look at, you know, this building, you have another building right here as well, which you can see from some of the photographs. So this is what I was talking about with the view issues. I know you want to wrap this up. I can show you the view corridor that we provided that shows how that was opened up. And, but I can't find it at the moment. It's in your file, so I understand you will be continuing. The other house photos. To claim that this neighborhood is, you know, that the bulk of this structure is not in keeping with this neighborhood, that's just not accurate. I mean, this is, these are some of the photos that we provided. This is number two Lookout Avenue. This is 16 Crown Avenue. This is 16 Crown Avenue, the abutters property. This is 321 Grand Avenue. This is 333 Grand Avenue, Hope Avenue. These are not cottage Gothic structures. They're very large structures. You know, we've given you that evidence. I also have this one that's been provided. You know, these are the samples. There's a legend as well. So this is the abutters property. This is Lookout Avenue. More samples, all in the immediate vicinity. This is the abutters property from Bellevue Avenue. So you see that this, in effect, is blocking anything going down from that angle. So I urge you, you know, to look at the site and walk the site and see what's really happening. Here's the shed here from this angle. When that shed's gone, that whole corridor is opened up. Same here. So depending on what angle you're at, these are more structures, the height of the structures, the bulk of the structures. What we're proposing here is really not any different than any of these. And everybody... And here's one down on Grand Avenue. The... I reviewed the minutes of the Historical Commission. I didn't see any discussion of this particular project site, so I'll go through that again. Maybe I'm incorrect on that, but certainly if the Historical Commission had specific concerns about this particular project, then there's... One would expect there would be details discussed. There's 115-page Historical Commission Guidelines Manual that outlines what they want from people, but to make a statement in a letter, "In our opinion, this is not of historic character," I just don't think the board can rely on that. And I don't think that there haven't been any details discussed in particular about this property. Mr. Kirk's comments... He goes... With respect to Mr. Kirk, he goes back and forth. On the one hand, we're talking about the neighborhood, and then on the other hand, we're talking about the private abutters. With respect to the private abutters, obviously, they are neighbors. My client has tried to reach out to see what it is they might want for an alternative proposal. We don't have that information, and we can't guess what it is. But the bottom line is that importing the private rights of neighbors or abutters into the neighborhood and somehow mixing that into the neighborhood views and vistas standard, that's just not supported by the bylaw. There has to be a balancing effect on what views exist, what views might be impacted, and what views will be retained. So I want to show you a picture of...
Counsel, I'm sorry. I'm going to cut this off. This is 90 minutes. You'll be happy to give additional submissions and time at a continuation, but there are six other applications this evening. This is going to be a continuance. Is November 3rd a good day for you, counsel? One hand. Is it the 3rd?
So one thought for the board. We were looking at the prospective date of November 3rd. That would be limiting timeline-wise for the applicant to submit in advance. So as an alternative, the other possibility would be December 1st. I don't know if that would provide a little more time.
I'll defer to the applicant.
Well, what's today, October 20th? So now we're out another six or eight weeks because the applicant isn't given an opportunity to respond to written materials that are coming in a day before the hearing. If I was allowed to respond to those and file them, I wouldn't have had to take 45 minutes here of your time tonight. So that's an issue. I mean, if that can somehow be addressed...
I'll put out right now for the represented parties to make sure submissions are submitted to the board at least seven days in front of the hearing date, or they will not be considered. For represented parties.
So the... When I objected to the submissions, I was told by Ms. Stockman that that only applies to applicants and that abutters and their counsel can present at any time they want. That puts an applicant at a hugely unfair advantage and takes up the board's time. So if this is going to be continued on, then I would, I guess, respectfully ask that there be some rules put in place on time limits for submitting new information by abutters and that the applicant be given seven days to respond, and then there is no further filings because otherwise we'll be going at this through the new year. But the reason essentially that we've had to take so much time tonight is we were not allowed to submit written replies, which I think is not fair or appropriate, so...
Date-wise, what would you like?
What were the options again?
So the first date we would have available is November 3rd, but if you're anticipating having seven days post the abutters making any submission, that would not be sufficient time. So perhaps the more reasonable date would be December 1st.
November 3rd?
Yes.
Well, today's the 20th, so if the abutters are given until next week to... Say, until Monday to submit what they want, that brings us to the 25th, and then if I have seven days, then I'm going to get that in. I can get that in before November 3rd.
Counsel?
Again, I apologize to the board, though I am unavailable after my client. I'm also unavailable on November 3rd. I would respectfully request a later date.
I... Maybe December 1st would be most rational so that we don't have a shortened timeline. That will satisfy everybody. December 1st?
Motion to continue to December 1st.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote.
And just for the record, then, what are the rules for submission of additional evidence that we're supposed to follow?
At least seven days in advance for both the applicant as well as represented parties. I'm not going to tell an abutter that they can't come to a hearing and make a pitch.
So if materials are submitted and then another material's submitted, there's not going to be any filings one or two days before a hearing, that they'll be rejected by the staff?
It will be discretionary. I'm not going to say they'll be rejected, but it would be very much appreciated. I don't want to start getting back and forth about procedural things or arguments about law. Make your submissions timely, please, if they wish to be considered.
Well, sorry, Mr. Chairman, but it's just a matter of the disadvantage to the applicant in spending more time at hearings.
The answer is seven days, next hearing.
Thank you.
Is it clear what we want to the next hearings? Not to belabor, but...
I will submit, if there's information to the board wants, they will be submitted via email within the next four days.
To the applicant.
To the applicant.
Or the opposing counsel.
And the opposing counsel.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. And your time.
Next hearing up is hearing 64-22, O'Connor Trustees, 84 Walker Street, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a half-story addition to the existing non-conforming dwelling. Ladies and gentlemen, we're still in session. I would just ask you could kindly take the conversation to the hallway. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
This is for the O'Connor special permit. I have letter, email information from Kevin Clower, attorney for the applicants. I have an owner authorization letter signed, dated July 26th. Lot coverage comparison worksheet. And then other letters referrals. I have a referral date August 4th, 22 from the planning department. They have no comment. I have an August 5th, 22 from the water department, signed by Kappa O'Brien, water superintendent. The existing home has town water, a three-quarter inch service. The renovated home may require the service to be upgraded to town standard one inch if the flow and pressure demands increase due to the addition. I have an August 5th letter from the assessors. No comment. I have an August 15th, 22, letter from the health department, signed by Scott McCann. System is suitable for three bedrooms. Third-floor office must remain non-private as it meets a lot of the requirements of a bedroom in Title V. Health will be fine with the project as long as the office is clearly open to the rest of the house. An open railing is shown now. I have an August 18th, 22, from the fire department, signed by Craig O'Malley. The fire department has no issues. I have an August 30th, 22, from the engineering department, with standard comments, recommendations to add drywalls, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof at a minimum, and to obtain a license from the select board for objects on the right of way to remove. I have a letter dated September 6, 22 from conservation, no comment. I have an email dated August 3rd from the ZBA staff to Attorney Clower. I have a special permit... Special permits 1697, 8699, and 2617 submitted to the pile. Those are previous permits? Previous permits. And that's all I think I have. Yep, that's it.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney at Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants on this matter, Brian and Sandra O'Connor, the owners of 84 Walker Street. We are here tonight before you seeking to alter an existing non-conforming dwelling by the addition of a half-story within the existing footprint. 84 Walker Street is located only a few hundred feet from where we're standing. It's at the corner of Walker and Prospect Street. It's a dense residential neighborhood with smaller lots. This particular lot is 5,800 square feet. It is in the residential C zoning district, and it is not in a flood zone. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a shed. Overall footprints just shy of 1,600 square feet. It is non-conforming in a number of ways. The front yard setback is 6.6 to Walker and 11.4 to Prospect, where 25 is required in at least one case. Lot coverage by structure is 27.5%, where 20% is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. And the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking is at 40.8%, where 40 is allowed. What's being proposed is a half-story addition within the existing footprint in order to serve as an in-home office. The stairway is open to the floor below, as was noted in the health plan... Oh, the health referral, rather, as to make sure this is not considered a bedroom. The proposal does not impact the existing non-conformities, and it does not create any new non-conformities. However, due to the existing setbacks in lot coverages, it does require a special permit under 243(c) and 2469(e). Under 243(c), the bylaw states that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be altered by special permit provided the board finds that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. In order to determine that, you're asked to consider the standards 242-16 and whether or not the creation... The alteration, rather, that creates any new dimensional non-conformities impair views and vistas and reason to conform to the neighborhood. In this case, as is noted, there's no new non-conformity created. The existing non-conformities are unaffected, and there's no change to the views and vistas in the public ways, and it does conform to the neighborhoods. In the residential C zoning district, lot coverage by structure exceeding 20% requires a special permit, which brings us to 2469(e), which allows for that lot coverage in excess. And there, the board's asked to consider the size and height of the structure relative to the size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, the impact on views and vistas in the public ways, and the effect of nitrogen and coastal impoundments. Here, we have, as I said, no real impact on views and vistas in public ways. It is a pretty dense neighborhood already. We're going up a small amount, and because of that denseness, we don't think there's going to be much effect on shadow. It's already going to be a shadowed area. There's no impact on nitrogen, there's no change in the bedrooms. And as to the size and height of the structure, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet looking at 41 nearby properties. Of those, 17 had larger gross floor areas and 25 had larger footprints, which is very close to the average size in the neighborhood for both gross floor area and footprint. This project, as proposed, represents an improvement for the owners and is by no means substantially more detrimental than what exists. The existing non-conformities, as I mentioned, are unaffected. There's no new dimensional non-conformity. There's no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits. Further, I believe that this meets the requirements of 243(c) and 2469(e) and 242-16. For these reasons, I would ask that this board grant a special permit, and I'd, of course, be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board, start with you, Mark.
I have no questions except, and it's just an observation or whatever. I mean, this is a stamped plan, and on the front page it says, "One and a half-story wood-framed dwelling," and obviously, it's a two-and-a-half-story wood-framed dwelling.
It's proposed to be two-and-a-half story. We're adding a half-story to it.
Yeah, but it's not... It's a two-story dwelling now.
Sure.
It says one and a half. That's just my comment. The print is incorrect, and a stamp, you kind of expect accuracy from someone with a license.
I'll make... I will make a note of it to the engineer, just to be ready.
Just a minor detail.
Is the railing shown on these plans?
The railing is. I'd be happy to show you that. It is... If you go to... Page A13, and it does note that there's an open railing right there down to the floor below. So there's no case opening at the top of the stairs.
Just to reiterate, so it's an office area only?
I mean, that could be used for a den or, you know, movie watching or whatever, but it's not... They're not intending to use it as a bedroom.
Okay, so septic's for three bedrooms. We're staying in three bedrooms. And then Attorney Clower, the stone walls were in a public place?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we see this on most properties, for better or worse, and as with anything else, we'd be happy to seek a license. I don't think that's something, a split rail fence that they're going to get rid of. They'll seek a license for this. But yeah, we'd be happy to have that as a condition, and of course, to do so. And just relative to the three-bedroom count, I think that if that's noted in the decision, that effectively becomes a condition unto itself, so until they were to go and get a greater septic system, they'd be barred from doing any additions to the bedrooms.
Perfect. Thank you.
Jerry?
No comments.
Attorney Clower, what's the bulk increase as proposed? We're adding, it looks like 243 square feet of gross floor area.
Shed remaining?
It is.
Any other follow-up comments or questions? How would the board like to proceed? Excuse me, public comment? Seeing none, how would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to close?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? That's a vote. Discussion or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Give that to Scott. Second to Mark. Findings.
That's me. Get ready. All right, let's find where I am. You need help.
243(c), 2469(e). Not more detrimental. Applicant seeks to add a one-half-story addition. There'll be an increase in the bulk of approximately 243 square feet. You can reference the applicant's lot coverage, non-conformities. No new non-conformities are created by the project. Findings. No opposition at the hearing. Believe there was anything on the file.
Just reading.
Maintaining the same number of bedrooms, not adding.
Testimonies that the third-floor office will remain open, will not be used as a bedroom. Testimonies that the applicant will obtain a license for the encroaching fence.
Do you want any construction hours?
That'll be conditions, yeah. Any other findings? Conditions?
No further changes to lot coverage without approval from the zoning.
Per plans, standard work hours, referrals from various town departments can be incorporated in conditions. in conditions. Anyone else?
Stay with the three bedrooms.
Stay with three bedrooms. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, to vote.
Thank you.
Next up, we have hearing number zero-six-seven-two-two, Cushing, ninety Nantucket Avenue, requesting modification of special permit ninety-four oh-six. Proposed a half-story addition, creating additional living space and exceeding lot coverage. Maybe I'll just read the notice, please.
Two, Cushing. You read the notice?
No, I've read it.
It's an application, sixty-seven dash twenty-two, David and Wendy Cushing, five Sullivan Terrace Framing Unit. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals, modification of a special permit ninety-four dash oh-six pursuant to sections two four-three C and two four-zero-sixty-nine E. The code of Falmouth to construct half-story addition, creating additional living space and exceeding lot, lot coverage. Property is ninety Nantucket Avenue. And, let's see what I have. Where's my Cushing page? I have Kevin Clower, for the applicants. I have a FEMA cost breakdown worksheet. Letters and referrals from the town. I have an August twelfth from the Planning Department, no comment. I have an August twelve-twenty-two from the Water Department. The existing home has town water and sewer. The water service is one inch and does not have a meter bit, meeting current, current town standards. I have a letter August eighteenth, twenty-two from the Fire Department. They have no issues as the project as, as drawn is now. I have an August twenty-ninth, twenty-two from the, from the Board of Health, signed by Scott. Property on town sewer, right now. I have a letter August thirtieth, twenty-two from the Engineering Department. Standard comments, drywalls are proposed as recommended to comply with the town soil erosion and sediment control standard. Objects that are in the right-of-way must be removed or a license should be obtained from the Board of Selectment. And I have a letter September eighth, twenty-two from the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission approved the above referenced project through a negative determination under a request for determination of applicability. Plan of reference and approved permit paperwork. And that's all I think I have here. Yep, no letters.
Mr. Chairman, I filed a disclosure by non-elected municipal employee of financial interest and determination by the appointing authority, which is the Select Board. I am an abutter within the definition of abutter. They've approved it. I can be fair, and I have no financial interest in this project.
The record will so indicate. For the applicant.
Before I start, I do thank Ms. Murphy that there were two letters from.
I was just about to find it out, sorry. I do have a letter here, three pitches, they were concerns. The photos are on the Elysian side. So it's an opposition letter. And another, I think, is there two oppositions?
I think it's two letters from the same parties.
Oh, okay, that's it. Yep. I do have those, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was in the record.
Yeah, no, I didn't see them.
Good evening again. For the record, Kevin Clower, I'm here right now representing David and Wendy Cushing, the owners of ninety Nantucket Avenue, as they are the applicants in this matter. This board has spent a lot of time with this property over the last few months. As you will recall, there was a previously submitted special permit application under section two forty-three C and sixty-nine E, permission, permission to construct a half-story addition, which is the subject of tonight's hearing. After, I think, two or maybe three hearings and some discussion for the board, it was determined that although the members, the board members generally seemed receptive to the proposal, it was deemed more appropriate to withdraw the application and to resubmit as a modification of special permit number ninety-four dash oh-six. So we've done so to modify that subject, really respect section two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E. That all said, I want to review the details of the application anew because it's been some time. So the Cushions are seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling at ninety Nantucket Avenue. This is located at the eastern end of the Heights, just two houses from Little Pond. It is a very dense, largely seasonal neighborhood with very small lots. This lot is typical for the area. It is three thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven square feet. It is located in the RC zoning district. It is in AE thirteen flood zone, and it is connected to the Little Pond sewer area. Presently, there is a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of just over eleven hundred square feet. It is non-conforming in a number of ways. It is non-conforming to front yard setback, being eleven point seven feet, where twenty-five is required, to rear yard setback, being four point nine feet, where ten is required, to side yard setback to the east, being nine point five feet, where ten is required, to lot coverage by structure, being twenty-nine point five, where twenty is allowed in twenty-five, and up to twenty-five by special permit, and as well as lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking, being forty-nine point seven, where forty is allowed. The applicant's family has owned this property for forty-two years and have made consistent use of it for the entirety of that time. The house was rebuilt in two thousand and seven, and while it's still in good condition, the applicant's proposed addition is to improve the habitable and usable space of the home. That addition is a half-story within the existing footprint in order to serve as a family room or den. There's no impact on existing non-conforming setbacks or lot coverage percentages. The existing ridge height, the current ridge height is twenty-seven feet, eight inches. The increased ridge height is thirty-three feet, one inch, which is an increase of five feet, three inches. Still, while about thirty-five feet allowed by right. Though the addition does technically meet the definition of a bedroom, they don't intend to use it as such, however, it would constitute a fourth bedroom, which is allowed by right on, in the Little Pond sewer district. Pursuant to the building code and FEMA regulations, we did submit a cost breakdown worksheet. Proposed work is less than fifty percent of the town's assessed value, so therefore not a substantial improvement as defined. We are aware of correspondence from the abutters. While they're certainly entitled to their opinion and their voice at these hearings, most of these issues truly seem to stem from a personal animus that are being directed to the applicants through the application. However, at part, as part of the previous submission, we did submit, review the two thousand and seven special permit plans. The staff was able to provide us copy of those plans, and we confirmed that there were some discrepancies. The twenty-four point nine-five percent that was allowed in the two thousand and six special permit did not include any square footage for the steps or stoops. Further, measured the setbacks or the lot coverage to the building foundation rather than to the corner boards. Those corner boards have been expanded from the exterior foundation walls by plywood siding, corner boards, and porch decking. If you would remove everything but for the house and porch, we're looking at a discrepancy of twenty-one feet. That's where the discrepancy comes from. The two thousand and six plan simply wasn't complete with its numbers. Based upon the concern of the abutters, we, we did provide a shadow study as well. As you're all aware, it's a very dense area with small lots. There is substantial shadow. The study confirms the proposal has minimal impact on the effect of shadows. We have to show that real quick. So as you look at these, at this, the area in blue, shown in blue, is the only area of new shadow that would be created from this application. It is not a substantial increase in the amount of shadowing. So that all said, our request before the board stands, which is to alter the existing special permit decision under section two forty-three C and section two forty-sixty-nine E. Under section two forty-three C, pre-existing, non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit provided the board finds that the proposed alteration is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider the standards of two forty-two sixteen, and whether or not this creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs the views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new non-conformity created. The existing non-conformities are unaffected, and there's no impact on setbacks or lot coverage. Proposal remains consistent with many of the surrounding homes. We also submitted this under two forty-sixty-nine E, in which you're asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impact on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. This proposal has no impact on the views and vistas in the public ways. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. There's a permitted number of bedrooms on the sewer system, and it's four. Little change to the effect of shadow. It's a dense neighborhood with only a minor increase to the ridge height. And as to the size and height, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet for the nearby properties. As noted, most of those homes are on similar footprints with similar lot sizes, with most of the homes having, so we looked at thirty-nine houses, eighteen of which had larger gross floor areas and twenty-two had larger footprints. Even as proposed, this is at almost exactly the median of the neighborhood. That lot comparison worksheet shows just how similar this neighborhood is to the subject, subject property, both as existing and opposed. This proposal is an improvement for the applicants, will do so in a way that does not negatively impact the neighborhood. There's no impact on existing non-conformities. The proposal won't create any new dimensional non-conformities. There's no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits described, and it is very much in character with the neighborhood. We further believe that it meets the requirements of two forty-three C, sixty-nine E, and two forty-two sixteen. Again, for these reasons, I would ask that you grant the special permit, and I would, of course, be happy to address any questions that the board might have.
Questions from the board, start with you, Jerry.
No questions.
Scott. Attorney Clower, just to reiterate from the previous approvals, everything is, from your perspective, has been clarified, and they have abided by the previous approvals.
I believe so. I mean, the, the previous approval simply just didn't take into account the, the square footage that was going to be required. It showed, it didn't show landings, it didn't show steps, it didn't show areas that are necessary for ingress and egress to the property. I don't know how they could have built this, which is, you know, elevated to meet the then flood zone standards without, without those things. So it, there is a discrepancy in the numbers, but I think it's an explainable discrepancy.
I read in the, in the letter from the abutters about the shower, the outer shower.
You'll have to refresh my memory, Ms. Murphy, I'm sorry.
It says stated that an egress no larger than four-by-four is allowed to encroach in the setback, but anything larger will require a variance. They, they have a rear porch and a shower?
Showers typically aren't included, or rinse stations typically aren't included in lot coverage calculations. I'm not quite sure why, why they did in this instance, but generally speaking, that is not something that's included in the lot coverage.
Any other questions? Mark?
Again, my concern is the same one I had in the case previous to this, with the increase in the non-conformity. In your own words, you said there would be no dimensional increase in the non-conformity. But by virtue of you adding the half-story, it increases the dimensions of that wall. So how could it not be?
So.
A dimensional increase in the non-conformity. How could there not be an increase in the non-conformity?
But not.
If you increase the size of the wall.
Because, so, non-conforming structures may be altered by special permit. It says that there's no increase in the height by right, which means you need a special permit, which is why we're, why we're here right now. And, and it's, this is almost exactly the same fact pattern that you voted five minutes ago in favor of.
Pardon me?
It's almost exactly the same fact pattern you voted for in favor of, not five minutes ago.
The one I'm referring to is the, oh, boy, which we didn't vote on.
Understood, but the last, the last application was a half-story.
My concerns there are exactly the same as my concerns here. And the way I interpret this, it's an increase in the non-conformity.
Can you, just for, can you direct me to what you're reading, Mr. Finneran? I'd be happy to take a look.
All right.
Just the heading, or the subject, the.
Well, do you not agree that?
Just, what, what section are you looking at, sir?
I'm looking at section two forty-three, and it says, hold on. Where are we? Three exact numbers, I'm going to change it. There's a. Whether the extension creates a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs the views or vistas, whatever, I mean, it's, it's an increase in the non-conformity.
So.
You're not allowed any increases in the non-conformity.
But we're not increasing, we're not increasing the non-conformity because the non-conformity is a setback. An increase in the non-conformity would be coming from a four-foot setback to a three-foot setback. Alteration of a structure, which is allowed by special permit, is governed by this. So you're asked to consider those, those factors, but it doesn't say that you can't go up in height.
But it is not a, in, under six, it, where an increase in height will occur within such encroachment, there shall be no alteration as of right under this section.
As of right means you could apply for a building permit without the benefit of a special permit. Being not, being not of right means that you need to come to this board for a special permit, which is exactly what we've done.
I, I don't interpret it that way.
I, I don't know, I, I say this respectfully, I, I don't know how you could interpret it another way. And as of right, and as of right modification would be something that I could go to the building permit, the building department, and file a permit for. Meaning it's not of right means you need a special permit, which is.
Which we can give you or not give.
Exactly, and you.
And, and to increase the height, the thing is increasing.
If I can finish, please, Mr. Finneran, if I can finish, please. Not five minutes ago, you approved a half-story addition within a setback without any concern, without any questions.
But it's not.
You're absolutely right. It is, it is a subjective matter. You can choose to vote.
It is. And I mean, as I, as I read this, it, as I say, no, you know, I mean, you base it down, you break it down to the foundational thing. No, no new non-conformities, no increase in the non-conformities. That wall is, is not conforming, and, and you're seeking to increase it.
It's an alteration of a non-conforming structure. We're not increasing the non-conformity. Increasing the non-conformity would be to come closer to the side yard setback or to the front yard setback, or to increase the lot coverage. That's not what we're proposing.
I, I have a hard time reading it that way.
Mr. Clower, what's the increase in bulk with what's proposed?
It is three hundred and twenty-two square feet.
Would you agree that this is a increase in the use of the property?
Yes.
I'm guessing that may be what Mr. Finneran is concerned about, is that the property continues to.
So, but it's, it's to be used in the same manner. They're not increasing the number of people that can stay there. They're not increasing the number of parking spaces that are required. They're adding habitable space, the same way that any number of people could do. We are requesting a special permit for the modification of it. I think it's, we see similar applications to this all the time. It is subjective. The board has a right to, to approve or deny. But I think that this is, again, in addition of a half-story, we're going up five feet over the existing ridge, and, and it is an allowable project if the board chooses to.
You have a follow-up report to some of my questions?
I, I still maintain, I read it as I read it. I mean, it's, it's increasing the size of the non-conformity, which is an increase.
I mean, every, almost every application that comes before this board has, has something similar of this nature, where you have an existing setback that might be modified. It might go up, it might be dormant, it might be any number of things, but, but we're talking about, my guess is somewhere around sixty to seventy percent of the applications that come before this board have something similar. To suddenly take a position that you can't go up in height would be the definition of, of, the word is escaping me, of, I, I don't, I don't even know what to say. It just, it, it defies logic that, that we'd suddenly take a position that we can't go up in height by special permit. No one's claiming you can do this by right. We're not asking to do it by right, we're asking to do it by special permit. So what we're, what we're saying is that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. The bylaw gives you standards by which to judge that. I think we meet those standards and then some.
So one of the criteria under two forty-two sixteen I is compliance with all applicable sections of the zoning bylaw. My concern when I was reviewing this project, lovely house, and I'm not necessarily, I, I agree on there's dimensional non-conformities, but there is a significant, you're asking for a discretionary grant, there is an increase in the bulk. In looking at the history of this special permit. In looking at the history of this special permit, I think there's what I consider some encroachment or a creep. The special permit authorized lot coverage originally at 20.04 to 24.95, we're now at 29.5. Parking paving went from 36.9, we're now at 49.7, and there was this issue about the shed, which was specifically to be removed and had to have an enforcement action to get it out. And now it appears that there are two or three, I don't know what you want to call them.
Storage bins.
Storage bins, or out creep of things off the side.
There've been, there've been that you and I could pick up, they're wooden structures, but you and I could pick it up and move it. It's...
Can you...
I had, I had the exact number of what the difference between 29 and 24, wasn't it? I don't have it. We're talking about a lot of 3,700 square feet, changes of 30, 40 square feet make substantial differences in these numbers. What they proposed, all right, let me back up. I also want to point out that nonconforming structures become legally nonconforming structures after 10 years.
You have evidence that this is a...
Well, the house was built in 2007.
Okay. How about the out bins?
I would, I would take the position that those aren't structures because they don't require, they don't require an affixed point on the ground.
Okay.
Which is what the bylaw says. If I have a kid's plaque, a kid's plastic playhouse in my backyard, I don't think that constitutes a structure. And something you could pick up and move, I don't think constitutes a structure, under the definition of the bylaws. The structure specifically says something requires a point affixed to the ground.
So, the concern though I have is it just, you have a special permit that very clearly laid out some conditions that it appears that may have been, the envelope has been pushed, now you're asking for a modification of a special permit, a discretionary grant, seeking additional bulk. That, I think, is somewhat hard to reconcile. It just seems, based on some of the objections from the neighbors, that that could be problematic.
So, the house that's proposed, the house that's built is the house that was proposed. It was signed, there was a certificate of occupancy issued by the building department, special permit was recorded, as-built or filed. There hasn't been any increase in the size of the house since it was built, and the house is the house that was approved. There are some differences in the numbers for the reasons we described, but they haven't done additions that they weren't supposed to, they haven't, they haven't created, you know, new wings of the home that they weren't supposed to, but they're doing it appropriately now, they're here before this board, asking for permission to go up a half-story, to a height that's allowed, to a size that's allowed. And I think that this board should give that consideration.
Follow-up questions?
Any follow-up question? It may be that...
Thank you.
The shower is attached to the house, therefore it's a structure.
So, that could be remedied by making it a freestanding structure, a freestanding post, and that's something I could discuss with the applicant. I think that's how it's typically avoided, by having a post next to the house.
I see what you're saying. Nice weave.
Any other follow-up questions? Public comment? Sir?
Mr. Chairman and zoning board of approval members, my name is Wesley Mallowitz, I live at 4 Elysian Avenue. We're butters to 90 Nantucket, they're directly right on our property line. Both my wife and I, we are in opposition to the granting of the modification of special permit 9406, plus the addition of a half-story to the existing house. In this application, they are requesting that the zoning board of appeals approve nonconformities that have been made to the existing house, which are not in compliant with special permit 9406. And they want to add the addition of a half-story to this existing two-story house as well. We have seen that from the years that the approval was granted to them back in 2006, '07 time period. My wife and I had appeared directly to the zoning board of appeals at their office in Chelmsford, I mean, in Falmouth, and we were told by the chairman of the zoning board at that time that we could not oppose this application unless we could prove that it was a safety issue. We have, through the time, have learned to accept this house, but it is more, becoming more and more difficult now for us, because my wife and I have permanently moved to Falmouth, and we are now residing at 4 Elysian Avenue as our permanent home, as of May of this year. And so, as a result, it's difficult when we look out our window, and all we see is house. We've got no other view, nothing, just house. And this additional half-story, okay, is going to take away that one little piece of sky we get to see when we're sitting and looking out our window. It's going to take that away. So then we'll have nothing but house to look at. We did not, you know, like I said, we, our objection was that, at the time, we felt that the cushions were entitled to have a two-story house, but my wife and I, our opinion of the two-story house, because we looked at a lot of two-story homes, and they're beautiful, they're well-suited for the neighborhood, and they fit in perfectly. We're in a postage-stamped lot, and this house is towering over ours. And we are in strong opposition, and I think my wife wants to come up and show you a couple of pictures, that, and we invite you to come and look inside of our house, and look out the window, and say, when we bought this house in 1984, okay, we had a beautiful view of the entire neighborhood. Even though the house was next door to us, it was not overpowering us. The back, the, one of the corners of the existing, I mean, of the original house, was 16 and a half feet off the property line, and relationship to our house was 20 feet. If our house was built with the required setback of 10 feet, and they had the required setback at 10 feet, we would not be here in opposition to this plan. Thank you.
I'm not good, as you know, about getting up and talking. I get too emotional over things that I can't change. But there is one thing, I know that you have seen this picture, because I know my husband sent them. But if you look at them, and look at where our living room is, and how high that house is, that's right where the addition's going to go. It's going to go up, and when I'm looking out the window in my recliner, I can see the sky. I will no longer see that. When they say shadowing, if there's no view of the sun at all, I don't know how it can be that he can say that there is. Shadowing is not really evident here. This is my backyard, this is the side yard of the cushions, of, I shouldn't say the name, but anyway, the cushions. And as you can see on this side, that's what I have, and I have to put all these shrubs up, so that I have some privacy. This is their back door, and that looks into our bedroom, and I mean, we can see the whole body when someone walks out. So we had to put up a trellis, and then put that in. We tried to fill this in, but unfortunately, these two windows, they can look down when our lights are on, and right here are their two kitchen windows. So if they're cooking or anything else, we're right there. But there's no privacy at all. That is a small amount of room between two houses that are so close, and especially one that has stayed small, with the way this, this area is supposed to be, mostly cottages in a beautiful quaintness to the town. I have been very upset, and I did write this down, I hope I can read it. How can a newly-built house in 2006 be uncompliant and still get approval to be built, and after 10 years of other uncompliant adds-ons be added, and get a pass to be considered legally compliant with the town's blessings? That comes from me. Wes and I, we have come to accept that house, and it's okay, but this is getting to be too much. I'm just putting this in, and I know that you'll probably be upset with it, but if this is approved, if this is approved by the town, I will definitely lose all faith in the town's loyalty to be fair to the abuddies or anyone else. Please do what's right. That's all I can say. When their house was built, they were able to get a variance to make it larger than what it should have been. That's okay, but they went by the foundation, not by the existing building coming out. So already it was bigger than what it should have been. You know, I'm not, I love Wendy and Dave, I just have a hard time with, but the thing is, is that fear is fear. It was his mom and dad that had that house way back when, and it was as small as ours. And we had, knew that life goes on and you have to accept changes. I mean, we knew that this would happen someday, but we really thought it would be something that would take into consideration how we sit on our property. And that's what Wes and I always did. When we lived in Chelmsford, if we took down a limb, we would consult the owner of the other property and make sure. Even here, we had to have one limb taken off of our huge tree, and I mean, the piece that we had off, that they had to take out was that big. And it was only because of construction, a labor, I shouldn't say that, an arborist came out and was taking a tree down for one of our neighbors, and he noticed from the road that there was a split in that tree, and it was really huge, it was like taking a whole tree, a whole, a tree down. And he told us that it was, it was definitely a problem, that with the dry weather we've had, it could have caused it to crack. So we decided it had to come down. Well, we called Tom and Heather, who lived next door to us, and we said, we're taking that tree, the limb down that's going over your house, because I'm more afraid of it falling. It cost us $2,000. Do you know what he turned around and said? Let me give you $1,000 towards it. And I mean, I was flabbergasted, because I don't see that anymore. We said, no, it will be at our expense. He says, no, I have no problem helping you. And this is what it's about. It's about kindness from other people, and I really feel this would be a hard thing for me to accept. I know you have to do what you're going to do, but I hope you do take this into consideration, because I'm really losing faith. I really am. I just feel as though every corner's making people hard. Covid has made people turn. And when you build a house and it's already uncompliant, I mean, uncompliant, yeah, compliant, and then it just keeps going on. I mean, I've kept, we've kept our mouth shut and tried to accept change, but I'm really sorry, guys, I can't do this. I just needed you to know, because this might be the last time you see me, so I needed to tell you. So, you make your decisions the way you feel fit, but I'll tell you, it's a really big deal to Wes and I, and we love this town. We love where we are, we're not looking for water rights, we just want to have a piece of the sun, and it's not fair. I think their house is lovely and it's plenty big enough for a summer home for them to come to, but adding a gaming room on, at the cost of us. So, thank you.
Other public comment? Follow-up questions from the board? Would the board like some discussion first?
They were asked to raise and remove the shed, and then, which was used for storage, and then they constructed these storage bins that are also used for storage. Is there an issue with that? I mean, is, we can't consider them because they can be moved? Is that what I understood?
To you in order?
It was capped at 29, or 24.95 percent, and that's already in excess of that. It's just a question.
I don't know, my understanding is that they're attached to the house, and that while you might be able to move them, it's bulk to the house, similar to if you had a cantilever deck or anything else. Maybe that's not affixed to the ground, but it still is into your setback.
Ms. Stockman, I think, my understanding has been that they're next to the house, not affixed to the house. I can clarify that with the owners, though, because I think that's a difference. Setting something next to the house is different from affixing it to the house.
All right, so if they're next to the house, then they cover ground, correct?
I understand, but I still think that they're not considered structure, because they don't meet the definition of structure within our bylaw.
I would disagree.
It would be considered a total lot coverage, though, yes?
Well, you've got structure, then you've got structures, paving, and parking, so it's not paving and it's not parking.
So it's non-existent?
Again, I'd go back to if you have a swing set, or you have, I think a swing set is actually more of a structure than this is. There are any number of things you could have in your yard that don't constitute lot coverage, but are there.
I don't see that a swing set has a roof.
But it's a structure, but it's something that's affixed to the ground.
They're using these for structures to store.
So...
Similar to the shed, so it seems to me that you traded one for another.
But if it was a plastic storage bin, as opposed to a wooden storage bin, is that, is that a shed? Is that, again, if you look at the definition, it's not something that requires an affixed point to the ground, it is something that you can pick up and move. So, that would be my position on it.
You don't pick up and move a shower?
What are your feelings overall about the project?
It seems like an extra bite at the apple for me. That's exactly how I feel about it.
Scott?
Yeah, the history's hard to kind of put behind us. These components that you pointed out, we could go back and forth whether they're part of the structure or not. I, yeah, I'm still struggling with the process on this specific application.
Jerry?
Yeah, I guess that would be, put it bluntly, a no at this point.
How would the applicant like to proceed, given the input from the board?
The applicant's not here. I'd obviously like a chance to discuss it with them. Perhaps there's some alterations that can be made, or changes that can be made. I don't know. I can't make that determination, so what I'd like to do is request a continuance, so I can consult with the applicant.
The board in favor of a problem with the continuance?
Yeah, I just, granted, it might be a minor detail or something easily, but, I mean, they haven't actually proven that the thing has been there, so it's currently in violation, would it be not? And therefore, we would not be allowed to issue a verdict of any sort. Is that a misinterpretation?
I think that the applicant could certainly provide evidence as to how long they've been there, so that might be a, a strong suggestion.
2007.
2007, that's 10 years.
But there's no, there's no testimony that they've been there since the, since 2007.
And I don't know, and I'm not going to give that testimony, because I don't know.
And I, and I don't know, and I'm not gonna give that testimony because I don't know.
Do you have a date? Norrie?
I moved in in 2008.
Back to December 1st.
It's November 3rd, too soon.
Probably, if I have to have plans in next week.
December 1st.
I just want to be realistic.
We appreciate that. Is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue, December 1st.
We have a second? Sorry, did you hear? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Matter is continued.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Mark.
I couldn't find anything.
How would the board like to proceed?
A public comment, excuse me. It's getting late.
Motion to close.
Motion to close is our second. Give it to Jerry. If you have all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. That's a vote.
Motion approved with condition.
Give it to Jerry. Is there a second?
Second.
Give it to Mark.
Findings.
Findings. Here we go again to find my findings. Find the findings.
Two forty sixty-nine E. The applicant seeks to remove an existing garage and mudroom, rebuild and expand the garage with living space above. Current lot coverage is at nineteen point three percent or twenty-two hundred and eighty-three square feet. It's going to twenty-five hundred and forty-seven square feet or twenty-one point five seven. Lot is adequate. It's in an RV zoning district. Currently a five-bedroom. Septic is in place. It is going to five bedrooms. Suit for use. No objections at the hearing. None filed. Anybody else?
Standing.
Conditions? Per plans? Increase one inch. Bring the water main up to town code. Anything else? Norrie?
No further as of right.
Yep.
I upset on a special permit.
Modification to special permit. Anything else?
Could you note that there could be an administrative change in special permit as well?
Certainly. For de minimis changes, absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the new hearings. We have zero seven three two two Bowen, twenty-four Boston Street T ticket requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the non-conforming, single-family dwelling exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures.
Okay.
Start to read the notice in, please.
I have a application from Stephen Bowen, twenty Zane Park Drive, Braintree map, applied to the zoning board for special permit pursuant to section two forty dash three C and two forty-sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the non-conforming, single-family dwelling exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structure on the property known as twenty-four Boston Street T ticket. And I have letters. I have an August twenty-four twenty-two from the planning department, no comment. An August twenty-four twenty-two from the water department. The existing home has town water and sewer. The existing main that serves Boston Street is two-inch, so there is limited water flow and pressure in terms of additional bathrooms and/or plumbing fixtures. I have an August twenty-nine twenty-two from the board of health, signed by Scott McCann. Property is on town sewer, allowed four bedrooms. Comments on the project in relation to wastewater should come from the wastewater division. I have a letter August thirtieth twenty-two from the assessors office. Signed by Patricia Director. It includes lot one twelve, one thirteen, and one fourteen? What does that mean, Norrie?
There were multiple smaller lots that have been, you know...
Okay. I have a letter September fifteenth twenty-two from the conservation. The property is located entirely in the flood zone. The proposed project will require a permit from conservation. I have a referral date, September twentieth, a letter from the engineering department. He has standard comments. Recommendation to condition the addition of dry wells, rain garden, and other stormwater infiltration measures to comply with section ninety-nine one. They need to put legible numbers, time limit for compliance, soil erosion and sediment control standard, and obtain a license from the select board to remove objects from the right-of-way. And I have an email from the staff to Russ Crawford. I have three letters of support also. And that's what I have.
For the applicant.
Good evening. For the final time this evening, I am Kevin Cloud. I'm representing the applicants, Stephen and Sally Bowen, the owners of twenty-four Boston Street. They are seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling. This property is located in the southern end of Maravista. It's on a lot of seventy-two hundred square feet, which I think is pretty typical for the area. My understanding is that you had a lot of very small lots. They were actually, I think recently even campsites that were turned into a subdivision. So most of these lots have, actually comprise three separate parcels, which is just to Ms. Murphy's question. It is located in RC zoning district and it is in an AE twelve flood zone. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling and shed with a footprint of twelve hundred and forty-five square feet. The existing dwelling is non-conforming to front yard setback. It's presently thirteen point four feet where twenty-five is required. The applicants have owned this property since two thousand, but they are seeking to make it their primary residence. The house does need significant repair, both cosmetically and structurally. Given its location in the AE twelve flood zone, the scope of repairs necessitate compliance with the flood zone standards. It would require the actual elevation of the structure, but given its current condition, that simply doesn't make sense. So they really left with no choice but to raise the existing structure and to rebuild a new one in compliance with those requirements. Pursuant to the building code and FEMA standards, they must raise the structures so that all habitable space mechanicals are at least one foot above the flood zone elevations, which is approximately four feet above the existing grade. So you'll note on the plans, this proposed dwelling, first floor elevation fourteen point zero. This proposed dwelling reduces clutter on the lot substantially. It eliminates the existing shed. Does include a garage, which the house doesn't currently have, which will reduce outdoor parking. It maintains the same number of bedrooms, which are allowed by right as it is on the Little Pond Sewer District. The non-conforming front yard setback is improved. It goes from thirteen point four feet to eighteen point three. The proposed ridge height is twenty-nine feet, which is well below the thirty-five that's allowed. The existing ridge height is nineteen feet, but when you consider the fact they have to come up four feet for elevation, it's really only an increase of six. Lot coverage by structure, though increasing, is allowed with the assurance of a special permit. And I think lastly, and most importantly, it will comply with the FEMA requirements. Due to existing non-conformities, this does require a special permit under two forty-three C and due to the lot coverage increase requires one also under two forty-sixty-nine E. Two forty-three C, as we discussed, allows for pre-existing non-conforming structures to be changed by special permit, provided that it's not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider whether or not it creates new dimension non-conformities, impairs views of vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new non-conformity created. The only existing non-conformity is improved, and the proposal does not impair views of vistas of the public, and it does fit with the neighborhood. Which brings us to two forty-sixty-nine E, which again, as we've gone over a few times tonight, allows a lot of coverage by structure over twenty percent by special permit. And the board is again asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views of vistas in public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abandons. I think it is worth noting that Maravista is a rapidly changing area. I think it's arguably the area most affected by the changes to the flood maps in two thousand and fourteen. We're seeing many houses going through the similar process, and I think in many ways is the neighborhood that's going through the biggest changes as a result of those changes to flood zone maps. And while change is scary in a lot of ways, it should be applauded. The owners are doing what we should want them to do to lessen the impacts of storms and change. The Bowen's proposal will not impact views of vistas in public ways. They're at the end of a dead-end street. It's a very dense, and while the dwelling is larger than present, it is a very dense cluster of neighborhood with many homes of similar scope and design. And I think more to come realistically. A lot comparison worksheet was submitted. Proposed dwelling is by no means an outlier within the area. Many of the homes, as I think you all know, are in the area are well in excess of twenty percent. There's no effective nitrogen on coastal abandons. Same number of bedrooms as at present, and it is on a sewer, which allows for four bedrooms by right. And the project, as proposed, represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions, both for the applicants and for the public concern. The existing non-conformities improved. Again, no new dimensional non-conformities, no adverse effects. It overbalanced a lot of the benefits discussed. In short, there's really nothing about the proposal that's substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe and that we've demonstrated it meets the standards of two forty-three C, sixty-nine E, and two forty-two sixteen. And I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have. Otherwise, I would love to go home.
Questions. Start with Mark.
I have none.
I'm all set myself.
Scott.
What's the open item with the conservation department?
An RDA was filed. An RDA was submitted recently. We have a copy of it here, which I could, I'd be happy to email to. I just took the memories of the vote. Yeah. In short, an RDA was filed with the conservation. I'd be happy to submit a copy of it to the files, just for your records.
Okay. Thank you.
Jerry.
Did you say the water department said the house has low water pressure?
Yeah. So the street has low water pressure. Says it's only, it's only, they said it's only a two-inch, two-inch main on the street.
So the street has, okay.
No? Shed remaining?
No.
You assume that mantle from Kim and TJ? Long line of that question being asked.
My concern is that you have a dry well appearing to be right under.
Well, no. So you'll see anything that's hash marked in that direction is being removed.
Excellent. Any other questions? How would the board like to proceed? Public comment?
Good job.
Seeing none.
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote.
Do the motion. Motion approved with condition.
All right. Findings.
Oh, boy. We'll find it.
Something more detrimental than able to.
I can't find.
Two forty-three C, two forty-sixty-nine E.
Is existing, is in the existing Little Pond Sewer service area?
Yep.
It will need CONCON approval.
Currently.
Which we haven't got yet.
Is in a flood zone, four-bedroom, allowed as a matter of right as it's on sewer. Three letters of support.
License from the select board?
There is a current non-conformity.
Object.
That is being reduced from thirteen point four feet to eighteen feet where twenty-five is required. It's going to bring the property in compliance with the FEMA flood requirements. Going to twenty-four point nine percent, so there will be no further, can be no further additions to the house.
I'm sorry? Defense is going to come out.
Defense is coming out. Thank you. Anything else? Conditions?
Per plans?
Regular work hours.
CONCON approval? That will incorporate it by reference whatever.
They're hitting twenty-four point nine percent, so no further expansion of the dwelling without approval. Anything else on the referrals?
I would just put in that they need to comply with whatever wastewater requirements there are with the change in the dwelling.
Four-bedroom.
Staying at four-bedroom. Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening and all your hard work.
Coming up on nine-thirty, which would conclude the board's business, is there a motion to extend beyond nine-thirty?
Motion to extend beyond nine-thirty?
Till when?
Ten?
Yeah. Till ten o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, we have hearing zero two-nine twenty-one R. Court ordered reman Knox, nine Dartmouth Avenue, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the non-conforming, single-family dwelling.
And I have letters. I have an April seventh twenty-one from the planning department, no comment. April eighth twenty-one from the water department. The water main in service must be shown up on plans. A four-inch water main feeds the existing home to be rebuilt. The service should be renewed to ensure adequate flow and pressure. The existing water service includes a meter pit. The meter pit, it says pit, should be abandoned when the service is renewed and the new meter installed. Now, is most of this done because it's a reman? Is that how?
Essentially, I believe, a de novo.
Ask that question? Anyway, I'll continue. I have a letter dated April ninth twenty-one from the fire department. They have no issues. Letter April fourteenth twenty-one from the CONCON.
Is that it?
No.
No.
From the CONCON, signed. The applicant should file a request for determination. I have a letter dated April twentieth twenty-one from the engineering department. With comments. I guess I need to find them in here maybe. I'll find them in a minute. April twenty-nine twenty-one from the health department. Property is on town sewer. It's a four-bedroom allowed. Plans indicate four bedrooms. This is fine, as long as the storage room doesn't meet Title V definition of a bedroom. Currently, no window is shown, so not considered a bedroom. April seventh twenty-one from the ZBA staff to a representative. And that's all I have.
For the applicant.
I'd like to make a...
Oh, excuse me. Sorry.
I did, as I, I gotta look at this again. The select board approved a disclosure by non-elected municipal employee of financial interest in determination by appointing authority. I am an abutter. I filed with the select board. They approved it. I can be fair and impartial, and I have no financial interest.
I'll be on the record. Counsel, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney. I have an office in Sandwich, and I'm representing the applicants tonight. Dr. James Knox and Mary Beth Knox, who are here in the audience with me, as well as the hopeful builder for this project, Philip Miller. As the notice was read, this is a reman. This case is on appeal in the Superior Court. It was an appeal by an abutter of an approval by this board. This is an approved project. We're back here before you because both parties requested a reman to have the board consider a modified project that addresses the concerns of the abutter who filed the appeal. So having said that, let me just give you a little bit of background. The property we're talking about is nine Dartmouth Road. It's located in an RC district, and it's in a FEMA flood elevation AE thirteen zone. The property is three thousand seven hundred and thirty-three square feet, and it's improved with a single-family dwelling that was originally constructed in nineteen thirty. The property has been in Mary Beth's family since nineteen sixty-one. After her parents passed away somewhat recently, in twenty-twenty, Mary Beth and Dr. Knox, her husband, acquired the property from her family. They intend to make the property, they're Falmouth residents, but they intend to make this property their permanent residence. And to that end, they proposed some improvements, and because, like the last project, it's in a FEMA flood zone, what they want to do is raise the structure and build a new one in its place, and they sought a special permit from this board to do that. So I have here before you, this is a picture of the existing house, and here are some elevations of the existing house. And what they did was, they proposed this house, and I can... You can see, they proposed this house, again, it has to be elevated, and so the first level had this garage that we're going to park under, and then there were two living levels and an upstairs area. The board, after public hearings, approved this project. The neighbor that is to the north, which is to the rear of the property, filed an appeal. In this particular property, the height is thirty-four point five feet, which complies with the thirty-five height requirement of the neighborhood. But the neighbor asserted an argument based on your definitions. Excuse me, I'll try to manipulate this. There's a two-part test in your bylaw in section two forty dash seventy, and I only included the pertinent language. But what it says is that the basic maximum height for principal structures is two and a half stories, not to exceed thirty-five feet. And so the neighbor took the position that even though the structure complied with the thirty-five-foot height requirement, she claimed that the structure here was actually more than two and a half stories. My clients don't agree with that. In fact, they contest otherwise because they feel that because they were forced up because of the FEMA flood zone, that this is not a two-and-a-half-story structure, and they found other properties in the vicinity that the board has approved that's very similar to this. But once the appeal was filed, they decided to engage the neighbor in discussion to try to work out something rather than litigate the matter. And the neighbor took the position that if the structure were lowered slightly, that she would have her concerns addressed. And so after some negotiations through counsel, we came up with this structure, which, as you can see, the garage is now gone. The structure is still, the habitable space is elevated one foot above the flood plain, which is about four feet or so above grade in this particular property. And the abutter feels that this complies with the two-and-a-half-story limitation. Again, we're not conceding that. We're, if we had litigated it, we know that the Superior Court gives deference to this board's decisions, but we wanted to be a good neighbor. We wanted to work things out with the neighbor behind. And she has approved this proposed structure. And so we are here before you, asking you to approve the structure. It's in the same footprint as was approved before, insofar as the setbacks are concerned. I could go through the dimensional requirements if you want, or our position really is simply that this is a subset of what this board approved before, and you already made all the findings that the other structure was not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. This was the one appealing abutter, and she's been, I know she's not here tonight, but I'll represent to you that I've been working with her attorney, and this is an agreed-upon plan.
So, Bob, one question for counsel and to you, Madam Administrator. I was three quarters of the way through Judge Gilde's ruling and the paperwork, and the phone rang, and I didn't get back to it. Is this considered a de novo, or is this merely going to be, is this considered a... As part of the reman, can we adopt the former findings, or are we going to take the evidence into the record? I just don't want to create a second appeal.
Yeah. I think there's no problem in importing the findings from the initial decision.
And to the chair, I can represent that the motion that was filed was a joint motion that we were agreed, and the proposed order was an order that I drafted and then had opposing counsel agree to. And Judge Gilde certainly did approve it, but it's all agreed upon by the applicants and the abutter.
I'll then defer to the board if they'd like to hear.
I did speak with the abutter today. She did not indicate whether or not she'd be able to attend, but she did not express further opposition.
Would the board want more additional testimony around this project, or?
No, I had, I did have a question. I'm very familiar with the house. Where will the new parking be? It's not under, to the right, was it? To, the father used to say there's a pool there, put your hand down. Swimming ladder over the fence. And I don't think we saw where the parking would be.
It's in this area right here. It's on the side of Nantucket Avenue.
So where it is basically now.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. 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 The hope was that when they proposed the first house to park under, and my understanding is the board actually liked that proposal because it got cars off the street.
Yes.
But the neighbor appealed, and so we had to do something, and so we're back to parking where the cars are parking now.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
No. I commend you for working with the neighbors.
Thank you.
Public comment? Seeing none. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mark, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's a vote.
Approved.
I'll second. Findings. I'd suggest we could just adopt the previous decision. It can incorporate the reman with a litigation Superior Court. This is a joint motion that the abutter has agreed upon the revised plans, and incorporate the height, the elimination of the garage underneath, coming into FEMA compliance.
Parking is now where it is now.
As is right, standard hours of work. About ninety percent of it was already in the previous decision, so I don't think we need to change too, too much.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Next, we have zero seven six two-two Cape Cod Aggregates Corporation, Drake Road, Dimmock Avenue, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to continue the earth-moving operation and reclamation of land.
Step out.
Oh, you want to step out? Oh, you need to recuse. Yes. All right. On the record, Mr. Peterson is recusing himself due to a conflict.
Where's he going? All right. What do I have here? I have letters and information. I have one from John Doyle, and I have an authorization letter from Paul Russo. Letters and referrals from the town. I have a September ninth twenty-two from the fire department. The fire department has no issues. I have a September ninth twenty-two from the planning department, no comment. I have a September twelfth twenty-two from the assessors, no comment. All these no comments are looking good. I have a September twelfth twenty-two from the water department, no comment. And I have a September thirty twenty-two, conservation commission, no comment. And an October third twenty-two from the engineering department, no comment. And I do have a letter with concerns, which I can read if you'd like. Is it in here somewhere? Can we read the whole letter?
Yeah.
Just an opposition letter? I'll read it. I attend the hearings in the eighties when Mr. Sam LaRusso, spelling incorrect, I think, first requested a special permit to convert the sixty acres of woodland into a gravel pit. This is from Loretta O'Brien, four-six-two Blacksmith Shop Road. I expressed my concerns about dirt bikes using the area even before the permit was granted. Over the years, I have spoken to Mr. Russo about the dirt bikes using the gravel pit, and he said he would look into it. Although there is a new CEO, I contacted Mr. Russo a couple of years ago yet again, and he said it was difficult to have the environmental police in the area when the bikes were there. Meanwhile, in the last year or so, and just last week, there was a dirt bike in the pit during work hours, and I would think the company and the CEO are well aware of someone in the pit during the work hours. Also, the dirt bikers seem to use the west end of the pit quite a bit, an area which is very near, I believe, to the CEO's home. So I would think the company is very aware who is using their property as a playground. The company has given the privilege to strip the sixty acres of woods and mine the area for gravel. From my perspective, they add insult to injury by continuing to allow the dirt bikes in the pit. And also, from my friend, yeah, there seems to be very little reclamation of the woodlands, and that's the only letter of opposition. And that's all I have.
For the applicant, good evening.
Hi, my name is John Doyle. We did have a copy of that letter.
Okay.
I'm Lance Sevier from Falmouth, and I'm here with two LaRusso brothers, Sam and Paul, who are the owners and CEO of their company. And I do have something I prepared. I thought it was going to be an easy here. I'll show, I'll pull it up in a minute, but I just wanted to explain that. This, we're applying to renew an earth-moving special permit. I have to bring you a quantity every year as part of the original decision, which I've been doing since nineteen eighty-nine, and we need to renew this permit every three years. So we got it originally approved. I did the survey in eighty-eight, in eighty-nine. We got the original approval, and this will be the eleventh renewal, so we're working on the thirty-fourth year of this. The property is located about, off Blacksmith Shop Road, about just west of it, a thousand feet or so. It's north of the high school and south of the waste management facility. So it, you may not see it when you're driving off Blacksmith Shop Road, but it's in a ways to the west side of Blacksmith Shop Road. Most of the stuff that we take out of here, the material is processed at the plant, which is out on Thomas Landers Road. And it's about, almost about a mile down to where the pit is from the facility out on Thomas Landers Road. None of that equipment goes in the public road. It all stays off the property. Some of it crosses the, a little bit of the town property. We worked out something with the select many years ago. I think it was Virginia Valley Ella who worked it out, so that we've been able to go back and forth on the hall road and not have to go into the public roads because some of that equipment is made to be off the roads and not out of the public roads. So I prepared something, and I'll put it up here, just to show you where we are at this point. So we're coming from the plant this way, about, like I said, about a mile, and it's a dirt hall road. These... These, when we first did this project, we had to divide into sections that were about 60,000 square feet each. They're alphabetized here. We have gone through the ones that you see in the white green, and they have been reclaimed and revegetated, and the vegetation is thriving. I think some of you were out there. I know at least two were out there. Some, I don't know, you've been out there.
I did not, no.
I made, this is my, this is my second visit. I'll put in my, some testimony in a moment.
Okay. And then this brown-colored area is where we're working now. So as we come this way, we close it in behind us, we bring the slopes down, we revegetate. And these are the areas that we have not gone to yet. And originally, back in '88, we went out with the natural resource people. We spent a couple of weeks out here and found the areas that they thought that the deer were migrating through, and they wanted us to preserve this area. So the entire piece is about, just shy of 60 acres, is about 27 acres that are in this dotted area. And the reason for that is that these are the buffers required by bylaw, and then we had to put aside this property protect for the deer migration. And over here with this abutter, we just got a letter from, at one of the original meetings, Sam LaRusso, his fellow father, agreed to give her a greater buffer because she's one of the only, well, I think there are only two dwellings that are near the property. Those are these. This is other land of Cape Cod Aggregates, LaRusso Town Land. This is the sewer plant here, so this, from this property line to the double-barrel Route 28, that's the sewer plant. Up in here, other part of the industrial park, this is owned by the webs, in the industrial park, and there is a windmill up on this piece here. This is a vacant lot, and this is associates of Cape Cod. That's, they got a big complex out there. And over here are some metal fabricators in the industrial park as well. So we don't get too close to dwellings, but we've heard Rupert and tried to work with her, and I'm going to actually ask Paul to address that letter in terms of the dirt bikes, because we talked about it up in the hall. And if you would, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to invite him up here to talk about it because it's a difficult subject. You're up there, you're dealing with, just to walk the site and shooting, and you throw them out, so it's.
Paul LaRusso, Cape Cod Aggregates. The dirt bikes are problematic, and I don't actually know what we can really do about them. We work with the Department of National Resources. We try and do whatever we can about it, but it's one of those things, like often, if you see it, you think it's kids and things of that nature. It's often not. It's adult men that are doing these things, often they're 30s and 40s and out there. And I don't know what we can honestly do about it. We tried as much as we can. I open any, like, real suggestions, but really, the people who operate these things, they're not going to call them kids, so often, a lot of men, need an area for it, and this area is not it. You know what I mean? But I, if I could answer any questions, I would, but.
You're not.
I think the main thing here is that you can't, we put gates up, they're locked. They can't even give a wink and a nod to anybody asking to go out there and ride their dirt bikes. They're liable for this. We try everything we can to keep them out, but if there's just a gap between the trees, they can get into the pit, and you're constantly chasing this. I've asked Paul to maybe contact Loretta O'Brien and talk to her about it, and maybe she can give some input as to, you know, focusing on this subject. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, or what we are looking for is a vote to continue with this operation.
Questions for the board?
I go up there all the time by the turbine and walk my dogs, and I try to stay off your property. It's right on the edge, where the dots were. And I come right up to the edge of your property. And the dirt bikes are up there. They're usually really nice to me with my dogs. They slow down, but they're up there. They're running around crazy up there. Was worse during COVID? I think it's gotten a little better.
During COVID, it was insane.
It was awful. And that's where I went, so I could be free with my dogs, so, because everyone in my neighborhood showed up from New York with all their dogs, so I just took off the hills. But there was a million of them up there.
I'll say that.
But they were very cautious. They were, you know.
It has slowed down.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I've noticed it too. It's really, it has slowed down since COVID ended.
Yeah, Sam LaRusso.
Yeah.
Who's there as well. Since COVID, it has slowed down immensely, but during the COVID period, I'm sure that she's remembering that. It was, and it was, it was adults, it was kids, it was families, it was insane.
It was anyone that was stuck in their basement, hopped on their bike, and went off. But it really has slowed down.
Yeah, so we posted, we have signs posted. You probably saw them walking through there. We block off entrances, and then they just make another one like was mentioned.
They come from the other side of the ridge, like coming towards the turbine.
Yep.
That's where they're coming out of. That's where I see them coming out of anyway.
Yeah, it's like you can see the defined paths where they're coming in, and we'll block it off, and they just go over a foot.
Yeah, it's tough, but it has slowed down.
Yep.
Definitely. That's all I had, just had to.
Mark, questions?
No.
My, it seems pretty straightforward. I mean, it's the 11th time.
Jerry?
No questions. I'm not sure there's anything we can do, unless you have any suggestions.
So for the record, I did gauge a site visit on the 15th. This is the second one I've been out there for. I will report to the board that there has been significant increase in the re-greening of what's already been mined out. I didn't see any issues when I was out there. I guess the only question I have is, do you have any objection to keeping that additional buffer of 200 feet that's been in place for a number of years with the abutter who's had issues?
No, we don't have a problem with that. That's fine.
That was my only concern, just the, this is the second time they've been back before the board, seeing extension of the permit. The abutter has requested that in the past. I don't think it's unreasonable if they're not objecting to it, so. I have no other questions. Any follow-up? How would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote.
Should we get public comment?
A public comment. I'm going to reopen.
Reopen for the public.
Reopen for public comment only.
The Public LaRusso comment.
Richard, do you have any comment? Any public comment? No. Now, if we have a motion to close.
So, close.
Second. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you.
We're not done, we're going to approve you now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Motion approved.
With conditions, I would just.
Same.
Same conditions, the testimony is they'll continue to keep a 200-foot barrier with the abutter. There is a complaint in the file concerning dirt bikes. Testimony from the applicant is that it is not condoned or attempted to seal off access points, trespassing signs. At this point, I would just, they've acted recently, that continue the same hours of operation or any other restrictions. Anything else you need? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to open meeting. We have minutes of August 25, September 8, September 15, and September 29. Are we ready on all of those, Marie?
Yep.
Oh, why don't we get Scott back in first, while we... Scott, I'm sorry, we're reviewing minutes of August 25, September 8, September 15, and September 29. Has everyone had opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Is there any discussion or requested changes to them?
None. I'm just seeing 29, it was in Doibstain, or 29?
I was in here.
There really, all we captured in the minutes was that everything was continued, so, because no one.
Vote.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's a vote. We have 118-18 Blue Flag Development LLC in 836 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, review of operational plan and a vote anticipated. I believe that there is a request for continuation of that to November the 3rd. Is that correct? Kind of a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second, Jerry? At the mark, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That's a vote. Board updates? Do we have any?
We're getting a new member.
Yeah, we may.
Well, there's the, there's an interview with the select board on Monday.
Maybe getting a new member.
Or a prospective new applicant. So we still have an opening for an associate. So if anybody's interested, they should submit a letter of interest to the select
Any other board updates? Board discussion.
We could discuss that we're tied, we're ready to go?
Yes. On that, actually, between board discussion and future agenda items, I started taking time tonight. I don't know, probably, it goes to both our rules and just general operating, but I think one of us should be responsible for holding people a little bit more accountable. I don't want to stifle debate and so on, but we definitely got bogged down on our first hearing tonight. But just kind of be thinking going forward about timing. I mean, in a pellet procedure, we have a nice little traffic light. Green is go, yellow is, you're almost done, and red means sit down, but I don't think we need to go that far, but I don't know, timer or something.
You did well. You did well.
I like the thing when you say, question was asked and answered, so you just move on.
But do we need some guidance from town council on the things that we're getting bogged down on, you know, specifically verbiage on, you know, when you're the abutter versus the neighbor in the neighborhood? I mean.
Or what the case law on a non-conformity.
Correct.
Dimensional non-conformity.
So I'd like to get some guidance from council on if the board agrees.
Yeah, I think that's sort of a moving target. I mean, obviously, you have circumstances where you have properties that are more spread out, and obviously, there's really a question about, is there a neighborhood, right? Here, you know, in some of the circumstances that you have tonight before you, I think when you have more dense areas, you know, obviously, it's always going to be the immediate abutters are going to be most affected.
Right.
And I think the intent of the law is that when they talk about the neighborhood, they're looking at perhaps not giving deference to a single abutter. But, yeah.
It seems that there can be degrees of non-conformity as well. I mean, something that's two feet from the property line, in my mind, maybe.
It's very different.
Looked at differently than something that's, you know, 22 feet from the property line. I think it's only logical, you know.
Even burden.
No, I could always be wrong, you know? I mean.
And even tonight, we had the issue of burden, who had to prove, and we had one attorney saying one thing, and maybe two attorneys saying something different, so he does have the burden.
As a general statement, what I would say to you is that when somebody's bringing forth an application, it is up to them. It's their burden to prove that they qualify.
Right.
And while they were reaching out to ask abutters for what the abutter would propose, it's never up to the abutter nor the board to craft a change in an application. It's up to the applicant to provide that to you, show, to demonstrate that they've tried to work with the neighbors and made exchanges.
No, I was feeling the shadow study should be done, and she's.
We should talk about specific cases.
Yeah, can't, shouldn't we do a specific?
No, not, not specific cases, but, you know, I think if there's something additional that the board finds would be of value in a particular circumstance, you certainly can request additional information.
Clearly, in a discretionary grant, such as a special permit, the board has the purview to say, we want more information, you need to provide this, or you can tell us no, and we'll make a decision based on what we have, so.
And I know Mark mentioned in previous discussions too, with the application process, would we look to standardize when we would want to have a shadowing document prepared prior to them coming into us, so we don't get in here, then we need it, and then you get a continuance, but you'd have to set.
I think it segues into one of the others. I think we do need a periodic review of our rules and procedures, because we've had a couple of issues come up. I think one of the issues about, not just tonight, but in general, about submissions of plans, paperwork, opposition, and so on, I think that we should start discussing with town council and the board how we can firm that up so that it's equitable and fair for everybody at the same time.
Well, yeah, you have definitely a circumstance where primarily the abutters are getting, you know, it could be like a two-week notice, depending on when ads run in the newspaper and when they're mailed to. And so if they choose to have somebody represent them, they're losing time with that, and then the attorney has a limited amount of time to submit. So typically, boards in the past have had timelines for the applicant, because there's an interest in providing the abutters with an opportunity to look at plans, right? But there hasn't been that same requirement with the abutters. That being said, certainly, if somebody comes in and they're presenting you with 50 pages in opposition the night of the meeting, that's not something you have time to digest. So I think it's very difficult. It's easy to have rules for applicants, but a lot more difficult with the abutters.
So that gets into First Amendment.
Right. And I think, you know, similarly, you'll always have the problem where if you tell the applicant that they have to finalize their submissions by a particular date, and then you give the abutters a particular date, you know, well, who gets the last bite?
And that's what we're getting into, is it who's, everyone wants the last word.
Right. And then when is it fair? So I think, you know, particularly when you continue, you know, certainly far enough out that it's reasonable to expect everyone to comply with a particular timeline.
I think it, especially a review of this, just to make sure that we can tighten this up a little bit. And I will just say to the public who's watching and so on, my intent tonight, I certainly hope I didn't stifle any board or any of the council, but we were getting bogged down, and we needed to keep moving things along.
Absolutely, yeah.
Exercise prerogative as the chair to move the agenda. But if I offended anyone, not my intention.
Well, it was good governance. Made the move you had to make. Wasn't going to get done.
Any future, other future agenda items?
I do, I am working on it, kind of an expanded application, which I'll bring, just show we can look at it next time or whatever, and it's only a suggestion, but.
Should go through New Orleans, just as.
We, I'll email it to New Orleans, and then we all have a copy, and we can look at it.
No, yeah.
Well, the town.
Just needs to be noticed for up online.
Yeah, the town is actually moving toward permannize, which would allow people to apply online. And part of the benefit with that is that the town has already captured property records. So when somebody applies on Five Happiness Lane, any information that's relevant to that property is going to self-populate. So that should help get more full information.
Excellent.
Yeah. So I think that, you know, that's, that timeline is coming up, where we're working with the software people on what we would want for an application.
Any other new agenda items to be discussed? Richard, anything? Our next meeting is the 27th, correct?
Correct.
6:30 PM, October 27th. See you all then.